Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time-travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, from kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at OCPS.net or call 407-317-3200.
Board members, if you could grab a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I want to thank the members of the audience for your patience. Again, I'm sorry that we started late here, but we had a larger number than usual of pre-agenda speakers. Tonight, to open our meeting, we are recognizing the incoming and the outgoing appointees of the district's Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. The advisory and the oversight committee is responsible for making sure that our district adheres to the law as it relates to our unitary status agreement. And for those of you in the audience who may not know what that is, that is the agreement that ended by consent the desegregation order that this district was under for close to 40 years. These individuals have worked tirelessly to ensure that what is best for all students in Orange County Public Schools is what occurs in Orange County Public Schools. Earlier, we had a gathering for both groups, and because of our pre-agenda, I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to come by and meet with you all personally in that gathering. But at this time, I'd like to invite the new committee chairman, Mr. Cran Riley, and co-chairman, Mr. Marlin Daniels, to the podium to lead us in the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Riley and Mr. Daniels.
Will you please join us in a moment of silent prayer? Thank you.
Please remain standing and join me in saying our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the outgoing members of our Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. These members have served for the inaugural two years of this committee. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your service. The hours that these men and women put in were countless, and it serves, they served a very, very important role in making sure that our schools never return to the vestiges of racism that we once experienced in this community and throughout our country. Please stand when I call your names, so we can recognize you, and then after, and remain standing if you could, and after we recognize you, I'm going to ask you to file by the front of the dais, and our board members have certificates of appreciation that we'd like to present you with. And I want to say on behalf of our board, I wish we could present you with far more than a certificate, because the work you've done has been very, very valuable again. First, Ms. Lisa Marie Lewis, Ms. Lewis, Mr. Phil Stump, Cran Riley, who is also our chairman, and Mr. Marlin Daniels. And not with us tonight, but who also served on this committee, our prior committee member is Douglas Store, Ms. Barbara Young, and Suzie Millsap. Thank you for your service. And now, at this time, I'd like to recognize and introduce our newly-appointed committee members, who will serve for the next two years, and those are Pastor, and please stand as I call your name and remain standing, Pastor Frank Thompson, Frank, co-chairman, again, returning co-chairman, Cran Riley, Mark Kaiser, Mr. Don Madden, Rosina McVicker, Rosina with us, Jim Daniels, Natasha Wiley, Mr. Cliff McInturf, is Cliff in here tonight? Co-chairman, Marlin Daniels, Ms. Ella Gilmore, where's Ella?
Yes, she's on here.
And Shirley Sharp Terrell, Shirley. And not attending also tonight is Ms. Jeanette Gabay, Gabay, who is not able to make it tonight. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your service. All right, at this time, and members of the Unitary Status Oversight Committee, you are certainly welcome to stay if you'd like to. I always tell everybody, you can stay and watch the sausage get made if you'd like, but if you have other commitments, we understand. And again, thank you very, very much for your service, but if you'd like, you may leave at this time, or whatever your pleasure be. Thank you. At this time, board members, we're going to go into our...
Mr. Chairman, I guess we worked them so hard.
Hold on, I'm right behind you. Thank you.
We love you guys and ladies, thank you.
I've never find a way to do that gracefully, no matter how hard I try to word it.
I've never seen him leave that pass.
All right, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent for our strategic plan update, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are very pleased to be presenting to you tonight part of our re-engineered strategic plan. If you recall, when we had the Broad Site Visit, they gave us several indicators, things that we were doing extremely well, and areas that we needed to work on. And so staff was tasked specifically with making sure we embed those particular indicators into our strategic plan that the board had previously committed to. And so as part of our presentation, I want them to show you how we have re-engineered, and then we'll talk more about the first indicators on our front page of our scorecard that are in the academic area, since we have those outcomes. It's also a good time for the board to give feedback around any additional measures or any changes or adjustments you would recommend, as we're starting again now at the very top of the scorecard. And so Dr. Jar is going to help us walk through some of that redevelopment of the scorecard. I'm very pleased, very excited about the talent we have on the team that's been working on that. We'll ask them to share it with you now, and then we can have discussion once they're done.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and good evening, board members. At this time, as Dr. Jenkins mentioned, we spent significant amount of time in several months looking at, with our teaching and learning staff, our area superintendents, area executive directors, aligning our strategic plan, our broad action plan, our district improvement and assistance plan into one document, which is our Orange County Strategic Plan. And I can also tell you that our school improvement plans will all be aligned to follow the same measures. Our goal, as Dr. Jenkins mentioned, our goal was simple: streamline our focus with research-based strategies all into one document. The team has developed a monitoring card as well, that you will, that we will use to monitor our strategies and initiatives on a monthly, quarterly, and annual basis. At the end of the presentation, you will see that we are clearly aligned and focused on our work and our teaching and learning in our schools. I feel confident that our plan will become, will help us become the world-class school system, so we can be the top producer of successful students. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Gina Tovine, who will lead us through the details of the plan.
Thank you, good evening. I'd like to direct you to the graphic that you see. Even though we are in a five-year plan right now currently, we felt like there was a need with the number of significant events that's occurring right now in our educational system in Florida, and also changes here in the district, that we wanted to take some time and really look at a revision process for our current strategic plan. So we've been doing that since March, right, pretty much after the Broad Report was released. And so what we've done is, if you take a look, you'll see it's the Plan to Study Act cycle, which most people are familiar with, but we have modified it and customized it for our needs here at OCPS. So I'd like to walk through that with you to begin. So we start off at the top with plan. The very first thing we did was define the system. We had a lot of opportunity to have conversation during SALT. Our entire teaching and learning team was involved in this extensively, and spent many, many days having conversation about our vision and our mission and our core values, and very, very clear priorities that has been communicated by Superintendent Jenkins to our teaching and learning team. Also, as part of that process and the planning process, in assessing the current situation, as you go along the flow chart, you can see that, we utilized the Brog Diagnostic Report as well. It had a lot of very good information in there that gave us some direction on where to go, and from that, we created a broad action plan. We also used our scorecard results. We called for additional student achievement data as we were working through each one of our business plans, and we have six business plans under the student achievement goal. And so we would pull additional data as we were having conversation and talking through it, we'd say, "Well, what about such and such?" And so we would pull in more data and try to find the answers to those questions that we had. And we obviously looked at our original business plan and the current strategies that we had. After that, what happened was, we had some very large plans, because we ended up integrating our broad action plan into our current business plan. And so there were a lot of strategies. And so what we felt like we needed to do at that point, because it was a very fluid process, was then create a small group, a small core team, that then started relooking at each one of the strategies and going through a causal analysis for each one of the six business plans, one at a time. And we met a lot, and focused on each one of them, and talked about the problem, and actually walked through the causal, causal analysis to identify potential root causes. What that did was, that helped us really look at the problem, really look at each one of the objectives that was in our plan, and then have something to compare our strategies to. So as we were going through the process, we could say, "Does that strategy really line up to what we have just determined to be potentially root causes for the problem?" From that, it helped us go through the refinement process, because our plans were fairly large with the integration of the broad strategies, and actually identify what we had, we thought was the improvement theory from that, or potential solutions to the causes that we identified. From that, we started working on, actually, after we integrated the broad strategies, revising our business plans. And we've had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Jenkins and share with her also some of the initial draft strategies that we have with each plan. We were able to tweak and revise our measurable objectives, because we wanted to make them current as things change in Florida. We wanted to make sure we were having the opportunity to revise those if they weren't appropriate anymore. And like Dr. Jar has already mentioned, make sure we're aligning that with our DIAP and also our SIP in the district. As we move from that, we go into the study cycle. You'll see a little bit more of a dynamic relationship between do and study, because like Dr. Jenkins said, that's an ongoing process throughout the year. It's not an end-of-year result at that point. That's where the monitoring comes in, that we're going to be doing in SALT monthly, through something called the Strategy Monitoring Card, which Dr. Jar mentioned. We measure our goals, we measure our objectives. We also are going to monitor our strategy progress and effectiveness, and we'll have continual reflection through collaborative, collaborative structures, like through SALT and the other PLCs. And then the end of the process is that continual improvement. As we go through this, and we continually relook and revise, we'll continue to refine our plans each year throughout the process. I'd like you to just look at this visual real quick, because what this does is, it helps you see the different plans that we have and how they all connect together, and what those relationships are. At the very top, because this aligns with the, with the process that I just went over, at the very top, we have our business plans, which you're familiar of, and we also have the broad action plans, which we've integrated. On the left-hand side, you see measurable objectives. Right now, what we have in place, and we've, we've had in place for a number of years, is the scorecard and the extended scorecard. And that's what we've used each year to be able to track our progress for our objectives. What was missing was the strategies, and that's where the Strategy Monitoring Card comes in play. And it's new, and I'm going to show you in a few minutes a quick snapshot of that. Something to be developed in the future that we're working on is a district comprehensive measurement snapshot, and what that is, is basically taking the data from the multiple scorecards and putting that into a format like, kind of a front-back type document. We also highlight, once again, because it's critically important for us to, to do that, is that our strategic plan is our framework. And underneath that framework, all of our other planning aligns, from our district improvement plan, our school improvement plan, even our professional goals align to the strategic plan, and of course deliberate practice in the schools. We did make a few format changes to the template, minor. At the top, we did go ahead and insert the title, because we found, as we were going through this process, there were a few additions we wanted to make, to make it easier for us to be able to actually utilize these documents. One was the title at the top, for example, "College Readiness Tonight: We're Discussing Meeting State Standards." So the one that relates to tonight's presentation is Meeting State Standards. We also did a numbering of the strategies along the side, so as we were having conversation, we'd say, "Okay, college readiness, look at strategy number one." So it was, it was much easier for us to facilitate through that process. If you look at the green next to the strategy, that's the broad indicator. So what we did, we went back and we aligned the strategies in our strategic plan to the exact indicator in the Broad Report that it aligned to. So we made that connection. Another change we made was the data display. In the past, what we did was, with the measurable objectives, we just identified the measurable objective and what those increases should be. We've changed that, and we actually calculated what that would be, and included it as an actual target, from the baseline, mid-year, and then the five-year target. So those are the minor format changes. This is a glimpse of the Strategy Monitoring Card. It's very hard to read, and it is a screenshot. This is actually an Excel spreadsheet that's a little more interactive, and it's on a collaborative site for our different teams to be able to go into and upload their data. And then during SALT monthly, this is what Dr. Jar will be using with our teams to have Now, what you can't really see very well is that all of the strategies from our six business plans are loaded into this document. We are indicating the broad indicator that aligns to each strategy, and the owner. And the owner will be the individual, or the, the position, rather, within teaching and learning that's responsible for the implementation of the strategy and the collection of the data. So when we come in monthly, that department is the one that will be responsible for uploading the information. There's a status update, there's an actual drop-down menu that you don't see. When you click on it, it will be an NS, an IP, or a C, not started, in progress, or completed. And the purpose of that is that it's very easy, when you have plans, the strategic plans, without the monitoring in place, to not have the implementation. In this case, we'll be able to monitor it. Have we started this strategy or not? Is it in progress, or is it actually completed? The outcome column is where they'll actually put in the data results, whatever it may be. It can be, it will be unique and customized to the specific strategy. So that's where they'll insert the data, the evidence, rather, for that strategy that they'll be using. This will be a working document that's used between the departments, because it's going to be very fluid and changing continuously. The next couple of slides, I'm just going to show you a couple pages from the Meeting State Standards, so you can kind of see the format, a couple more changes. The current condition on this one, we customized it based on the results from the small groups that met, where we took each plan, we identified potential root causes, and what the improvement theory could be. So the narrative will be very unique and specific to each one of the plans. I'd like to talk about this slide. I'm not going to discuss the strategies. Dr. Jar is going to come up after me and actually highlight the strategies that's within the Meeting State Standards Plan, but I would like to talk about this, the left-hand side, which is the data for Meeting State Standards. What we did was, when we took a look at it, we saw, and you see the data, all of the data points there in the chart align to the measurable objectives. So it matches perfectly to the measurable objectives that are in this plan. And so what we have in 2009, 2010 was the baseline, when the strategic plan was written during that time period. That was the baseline. But you'll see a solid black line, and the reason why we did that is that baseline is not relevant anymore. We've had so many changes in the state. We've had a change of the cut scores, we've had a change of the test, that what we decided to do was use the 2012, 2013 as our adjusted baseline. We recalibrated it. And so what we have there are the, are the results from that year. And then we created the target. We had a lot of conversation on what that target should be, and we wanted to make sure we had a very logical approach to development of those targets. And so what we decided to do was, if our ultimate goal is to be in a district, realistically, what should be the increase in the targets to each one of those components, because they align to the school grading scale? What should those targets be, that if we hit them, we would be a district? And so that calculation, Brandon McKelvey in ARA ran those calculations and helped us come up with those targets. So that pretty much gives you a glance at the process, and some of the documents that we're using, and some of the changes that we've made to the strategic plan. And I'd like Dr. Jar to come up and go over the strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Tovine. Okay, now, I'd like to continue here a little bit to show you the buckets that we have addressed in our strategic plan. Obviously, following from our summer, we, we spent some time doing some professional development and continuing our work that is going to be with, ongoing throughout the school year, is going to be an intensify approach, and increase the intensity really to support our teachers with the Common Core State Standards, as well as with the Marzano's Teaching Framework, where we're going to continue our professional development throughout the year. Under our chief academic office, we are going to provide opportunities on the MTSS, so all our instructional coaches are able to support our schools and staff, replicate a positive school climate and culture. We will continue, obviously, with the digital curriculum, implementation with professional development as well. Again, as our organizational structure has changed, and looking at our modules, our delivery models, I'm sorry, is we have to do face-to-face, online, and blended approach. It can't just all be on a face-to-face. So we're going to provide some opportunities for teachers, and work in collaboration with our ICTS department to look at the YFA accessibility across our schools. Continuing with our professional development, this is, again, as we spent time this summer with our coaching model, we, we spent some time with a three-day Leadership Academy, as well as with the Coaching Academy, with Dr. Marzano embedding his work, as well with Kevin Baird, who has been spending some time with us in the last couple of years in our Common Core training. So something that we are continuing to really standardize our approach in our schools. One of the interesting, and actually, it's, we're really excited about our parental and community awareness and support. We are kicking off a parent academy. Again, it's to increase the involvement of our parents in our schools to become partners with us in our, in our, in our classrooms. So our first one kicks off this month, later this month, and it's a parent academy under Ms. Schuler's direction and her team, where we are going to, again, educate parents, and our first one will be on family literacy, and literacy is the common core. Other topics, national bullying and substance abuse, Prevention Month, Pathways to Success, again, working with our parents on SAT, ACT, financial aid, education, and making the right connections. Again, this is to bring our parents to continue the partnership with our schools, and we're very excited about the support that we're providing. Our summative and formative assessments, we are going to continue to monitor the data, and we're excited about a new system that we have been able to bring in under Performance Matters, where it's more efficient and user-friendly for our schools, the data. Once the benchmarks or assessment are uploaded onto Performance Matters, the principals and teachers will have the data immediately. And again, the monitoring for our school improvement plans. Again, and this is something, as we continue to monitor, we, we have a program evaluation department under Dr. Jennifer Sasser, which falls under Dr. Tovine as well. Again, to continue to monitor our, not only our strategies, but also our end results, is the financial impact of our programs, human resources, and initiatives. So this is, again, something that we need to continue to, to do year-round. So let's talk a little bit about the data of where we are and where we landed at the end of the school year. We've had a, we had an increase in our Level III in reading and mathematics. Our writing, you will see that there is a decrease, but however, let me remind the board that the 81% from last year was at a 3.0, but last year's 3.5, which you will see a correlation to the 54%, meaning satisfactory, is, that's a 3.5. Last year's 3.5 was a 51. So we've had an increase going in the right direction, but we need to continue to provide the resources, because we need to increase the performance. Our science scores, we've had a, from 49% increase to 57. Our students making learning gains, we've had a minor dip of a 1% decrease in, and again, conversations that we're having in teaching and learning with area superintendents and our school principals, the cause, and then how do we continue to provide the support to help them? And the low 25% making learning gains, we had a decrease of 3% in mathemati, in reading, I'm sorry, and a 1% drop in mathematics. Here, the data speaks for itself. We are outperforming the state in the last three years, but again, we need to continue to provide the support for our schools and from our teaching and learning department. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Dr. Jar. Just a couple of notes I would make for the board's clarification. I think first, it's important to remember, our strategic plan was a five-year document. In about two and a half more years, I'm sorry, in about one and a half more years, we'll be looking at a major rewrite of the entire document. But I want to remind you, when we first created the five-year plan with our consultants, for those of you who are not on board, that input went through focus groups, and teachers, and principals, and various community stakeholders around building the initial plan. And during that five-year plan, you don't rewrite every year, according to our consultants. You look at some tweaking and some adjusting. Now, here's what's critical to remember, that bold line that Dr. Tovine referred to on one of our scales, where we had targets lined out. When the entire state drops about 20... When the entire state drops about 20 points because of changes in cut scores and reading, you can't continue to say you're aiming at the same target. When you drop from in the 70s to in the 50s for reading, and so they recalibrated that. But here is, here is additional news. In about two years, understanding FCAT is going to be sunset, there'll be an initial baseline year of a new assessment. So we'll have another bold line as we are preparing to bring it into our five-year plan and do a major rewrite of the entire document. But I wanted to remind you, the input was vast for the original creation. The tweaking that goes on from year to year is because of some things that are outside of our control. Secondly, I think the monitoring component is critical. It was one of the criticisms that we did receive. Our document looked pretty sound. Our monitoring systems were weak. And so we really beefed that up as well. I want to certainly thank staff for their work in that part. But most importantly, thirdly, I want to emphasize, performance of Orange County public schools should not be considered to have fallen off significantly. I'd like to remind the general public, anyone that might watch the broadcast, the moving of the goalposts further down the field, or the moving of the three-point line further out from the goal is critical for people to remember. And that particular graph that shows how the state as a whole has stepped down because of those increased guidelines is the best comparison to look at Orange County. We outpaced, in fact, we gained even a larger margin on the state with those changes in cut scores. And I will tell you, when we compare ourselves to districts that we normally compare ourselves to other large urban districts, only one outperformed us for the percentage of A and B schools. So we're certainly pleased with that as well. We're also very pleased that we have zero schools this year on the lowest 100 performing schools as the state ranks them. Last year, we had six. And so we're pleased with that. Now, all of that being said, I want to be very clear, we're not satisfied. We don't believe we have arrived. We have work to be done, certainly miles to go in the work that is before us. But I never want this board nor the general public to think that our schools, our principals, our teachers haven't done a yeoman's job, even with the constant changes in the assessment system that was placed before us, and even with those increased standards and rigor and the validity of some of those measures, our teachers and our principals have done a fine job. So we're pleased when we have that comparison, not making any excuses, assuring this board that we're going to continue to accelerate to make sure that every child gets a quality education from every teacher in every classroom every day.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And Dr. Jarra and Dr. Tovine, thank you very much for that presentation. Ms. Moore.
Dr. Jenkins, I know this was a very comprehensive process, and I appreciate the effort that the staff went to. The one question I had was, maybe it's a twofold question in terms of, I know we're trying to prepare for Common Core, and it's just difficult with these goalposts being moved. Perhaps you could explain just a little bit further why some of the additional requirements or requests and things that we're adding for our staff is necessary because of maybe performance pay coming or because of Common Core? Because I think sometimes that gets lost in the discussion, that it's difficult when we're trying to put all these pieces together and then we make changes, but it has the intended goal of certainly improved academic achievement. But we have all these things to keep together. And so maybe you could have, I don't care if it's Dr. Jarra to go back and through, this is why we had to add certain items just to be able to get ready for Common Core. And there are really some severe repercussions if we don't continue to step it up with Common Core and with performance pay. And I think a lot of times that gets lost in discussion of why we're having to work so hard.
I'm happy to speak to that, Chairman. So there are a couple of things to keep in mind, and talked to a reporter the other day, in fact. In general, we are supportive that Common Core state standards are going to be good for children, good for young people, good for public education. A transition of the way we teach and what we expect our young people to know and be able to do is appropriate. I think the greatest fear, the greatest dread, is when it comes to an assessment system that will match the transition of the Common Core state standards, the concern would be whether or not the state is rushed in their decision-making, or if they are deliberative and really looking at several different stakeholders for input on that decision. It will be critical during this transition year. And so I'd like for folks to understand, we went from Sunshine State Standards to Next Generation Sunshine State Standards. We went from FCAT to FCAT 2.0. Now that we're going to Common Core state standards, we need an evaluation system, an assessment system, that is going to match the standards. We also like for folks to understand, the standards are not our curriculum. They are simply a statement of what you expect children to know and be able to do, and then you're going to assess it at the end of the year. In between that is our curriculum and how we get children to that understanding. In the state of Florida, it's important to realize, certain things were actually legislated around teachers, performance pay, evaluation, and eventual employment based on student gains. And so we like to tell folks, things that we can control in our sandbox or where we try to manage the change, things that were handed down to us, we do the best we can to manage it. And so here's our philosophy and what we ask principals and our leadership team to really work hard on. If you know there's a test coming at the end of the day, at the end of the year, if we know there are high stakes around that that will impact our teachers, their raises, their employment eventually, those are really significant factors being employed by legislation. And so it is our intent to make sure, for lack of a better way of putting it, show them the test ahead of time, coach them and help them be prepared for that test, so that at the end of the day, as many teachers as possible can pass that bar and get their pay for performance or certainly retain their employment. In the state of Florida, the legislation is not under our control. And so Common Core state standards is not under our control. That's already out of the gate. I think we want to be involved in discussions around how we're going to assess it and how we build a new accountability system. I'd love to see all of the school grading system retired and a brand-new system built with a period in between where we develop new baselines and stop the madness for a short time.
But thank you for that explanation, because I think that's really difficult if you're really mastering your craft in the classroom and you're trying your best to learn all of these new standards and you're now incorporating technology in the classroom. It can be overwhelming. And so I think this was really useful for me to see that we're really trying to partner with the staff and the teachers to be able to prepare for these changes that are out of our, are out of our control. Dr. Jenkins, how much do we work through Dr. Jarra's office in the teacher meetings to help the teachers to understand, again, the delineation between this was mandated by the state, and this is really our response to prepare you, to prepare the students, so that we can be successful? Because I was just curious, how much of that understanding that you just expressed, do you think really gets right down to every school?
We've had both written documents and informational meetings. And I will tell you, what we count on quite often are our coaches' meetings at our district level to get information back to our schools. Common Core, we count on our Black Belt training, where experts go back to the school to share additional information. And honestly, we used our online learning system this summer to really bring that to bear for a large number of our teachers, over 4,000, I believe, took advantage of that, that really helped lay the foundation, give everyone a clear understanding. Because you're always going to have the risk, can't do everyone face-to-face conversations, someone taking it back to the school is always going to have a risk that it's not always as accurate as you would like. And so we provide information both on our website and we provide information via our online training as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins and Ms. Moore. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm just asking Dr. Jarra, if you could clear it up, clear up one other thing for me. I'm concerned about, I do want to thank the staff for this and the superintendent, and especially Division of Teaching and Learning. I like what I see in here and trying to help us and the board, all of us, to meet the state standards. My part is the professional development. I also like the idea, since we were with the broad, the strategies, initiatives, we do need to complete one part, because I think one little part that they shared with us earlier on page six is kind of missing. So if they could pull that up and add that in, that would help. With the participants, where they are interacting. Also, I am glad that you've aligned it with the broad strategies, but I'm concerned with, will everybody be able to get the professional development that they need? And if they are doing that, would it be a pay process? I know that, and I want to commend the superintendent and the staff and the board's approval of going forward, where some teachers were able to do it, and I understand that some were not. I probably would have been one that probably couldn't get to the computer to get it done at that particular time. But how are we going to go back? And would there be restitution made for that? But I'm just, I'm concerned about providing the professional development to the administrators and to the teachers, and would this be a compensated item, since this summer was compensated? So that's the question there. And then they do need to provide under 1A on page six, the interaction. And then if you go to page 10, I'm excited about the parental and community awareness of Orange County Public Schools' opportunity for involvement. I would like to hear a little bit more about the parent academy. Would it only be in Mrs. Schuler's area and those schools under her, under that transformation? What about the parent and community meetings? Would that involve the board? How often would that take place? And what type of resources are you providing for the parents? And where will these resources be housed? Because I go in some schools, new, and in some of our older schools, and I hear the parents talking about they don't have a room. You know, it's poor resources, and that some of them are just housed in a corner somewhere, and some of them you go in and they have gorgeous places and rooms. So I'm concerned about, you're getting these materials in, you're getting them involved, where will these parent resources be housed? And then, and what type of resources will they be using? And then the outreach for community support. Are we talking about business partners? Are we talking about finances? Are we talking about tutoring for those students that are the Level Ones and Level Twos? So that's basically my concern. I need to know a little bit more tonight about the parent academy and what direction it's going in, and the involvement of each board member within that community and how that's going to take place. And the resource centers, you're getting resources, but will there be a center and a place for parents to meet, other than in the corner of a library or in a little room in the back? Would it be a professional educator room to make our parents really feel that they are upfront and a part of the school? And then definitely the outreach of community support, what kind of support are we looking at there? And I would like to know if it's something that board members we can add to, since it would be within our district, especially if it's our targeted schools.
Dr. Jenkins.
Let me answer a couple of questions, and then Dr. Jarra can certainly add to it concerning the parent academy. As far as professional development goes, I think, Ms. Gordon, you have really touched on a critical point. Because of all of the initiatives handed down from the state, as well as our efforts here, it will be critical that we continue to invest in professional development. If you recall, this summer, we used some nonrecurring dollars to offer teachers who participated voluntarily in the professional development, stipends up to $1,000. Because I thought it was important during their downtime, there was so much on their plates during the school year, I thought it was important during their downtime to have a chance to catch their breath and catch up on all of those initiatives that had been handed down. And so it's our intention that we would have the similar type offerings for summer voluntary with stipends attached to them, as long as the board approves any of those nonrecurring funds for such an expense. I think the professional development will be critical. For administrators, we have the development going on year-round, as well as in the summer, since they're working in the summer. Of course, there's no additional compensation for them, but the expectation, the requirement is that they will complete the professional development as well. As quickly as things are evolving in the state, I will just tell you, professional development will continue to be critical for our teachers. I'll let Dr. Jarra comment on the parent academy. I know board members will be invited when it's hosted in their areas, and certainly invited to support and take part of that. And Dr. Jarra?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And yes, Ms. Gordon, the parent academies are district-wide, but they're going to be housed in each learning community. So we're going to start in the learning communities and then go around, but it'll be open district-wide for all schools, not just schools in the Transformation Office. So we certainly will invite the board to participate in the, in the parent academy. And on the, on the parent resources, those are some of the things that staff is currently working to get more detail. So we certainly will, once we have more information, we'll get that to you and to the entire board.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, this is very important for this board, especially since we're in the technology age. So it's, as soon as you can get that to the board, we need to know, because there may be some things that we can expedite to help move it. Because I'm hoping that part of the parent resources will be that the parent can take out an iPad and take it home, okay? That they would, that that would be under, especially in the areas where the students would not have that, because that was a lacking area for us. So I'm looking at the technology resources that can be available, their CDs, there are so many different things that parents can take home. And there's also where we can partner with the Orlando Public Library, and they can partner, even one night can be at the Orlando Public Library, where they can go on the internet with their children and have resources that would be available for them. Dr. Bridget Williams and I did that, along with Dr. James Lawson at Jones. And it was very helpful that we used them as one of our major, because we did not have the technology resources. So those parent resources, not just book print, but I'm hoping that they're technological print as well, that the parents will be able to use. So what about the business partners? When you do outreach, outreach means we're going out, we're going out, we are knocking on doors, are we looking for business partners that's going to partner with and become mentors for those children, or what?
Absolutely. Something we're working on. Actually, Ms. Schuler mentioned this afternoon that Bright House is partnering to, with us for this first one coming. So it's an outreach as well to the community, something we're looking at.
Okay. And one other thing I need to add, is it possible that, one thing that we forget a lot of times, we do these things, but we don't let the classroom teacher know? Is there some kind of way that you could put a little opportunity for involvement that the teacher or that parent professional, whoever's working with that child, know exactly what is happening there? And that could be, well, you, I'm hoping you're going to do it through the data, because when you do the parent resource center, I hope that you're building a database that is accessible to the teacher to know what that child is working on, and it could be a carryover.
Absolutely. And we do have a website. I know the team has, there's a website for the parent academy already, so.
All right. Well, see, I didn't even know. What's the, what's the address? We got a lot of poking and you don't know it.
We'll send it to you.
Okay, that's all right. I'm good, I'm good for doing that, am I not? Okay, everybody, we'll get the website, all right? See, you could have sent it out tonight, and we would have been on it. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Gould.
I also wanted to ask about the parent academy. And you answered most of the questions, and I know you're still in development. But one thing that I would like to reiterate, that when we've talked about this and in the workshop, is kind of that checklist for success, all the way from VPK to graduation and beyond. So that parents who, when you're taking your child to kindergarten that first day, aren't really thinking about that last day that they're gonna, they're gonna exit, but that's when they need to be thinking about it and really trying to plan along with their child and their teachers to be good partners. And some parents, you know, they go to the PTA meetings and they go to meet the teachers, but they don't really know how to be a good partner. So that roadmap, that checklist, not, nothing complicated, but just something clean and easy that could be there, that they can kind of check it off as they go. That's the next milestone, that's the next milestone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Mr. Roach? Mr. Roach?
I'd like to just recognize the fine teachers that showed up tonight. If I could, just raise your hand if you're teaching our schools here. It's good to have you because I know you could be grading papers. I know, I know my wife is. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about, and this might be a good place because I think it was mentioned, Dr. Jenkins. It's my understanding that in the last five years, we have had three sets of standards that we teach to, the Sunshine State Standards, the New Generation Standards, the Common Core Standards. Is that true? Three sets, three sets of five. So I want to acknowledge, I want to acknowledge the teachers in the room for adjusting to new targets each year in addition to the moving targets that come with the stationary targets. So I think that's a heck of a job that you're doing there. I have two questions. One of the questions would be, this year seems to be most unique in that this is the year that I think the, we're incorporating a blended model, hybrid model, where the teachers are teaching to the common core, but they also have to pay attention to the FCAT. How is that, how is that? Dr. Jarrah, it might be a good one for you too, but how is that impacting our teachers I mean, at what point, when we look at the data, do you want to say something, Mr. Swet?
Well, let's do this because I know we have a lot of folks here tonight who are here to speak on an issue of great importance to them. So at this point, I think I probably need to impose a little bit of parliamentary order. At our school board meetings, we would ask you not to clap. If you hear something that you like, might as well get this out of the way now. You can put up your hands and wave your hands if you like. I have some old hands here at the meeting. You know, board members, let's not ask questions, elicit a response from the crowd if we could, and that way we can go forward in a, in a manner that's conducive to us going forward for everybody who's come here and given us their time tonight. So what was your question, Mr. Roach?
My question would be, is based on the data that we've had for the last, I don't know, three, four, or five years that we've shown up on the board, what do we anticipate with a blended model when there really isn't a specific target like there has been? Might be one thing. Would the board anticipate a sketchy score coming in? Is there any way? I mean, they've been pretty consistent throughout. That would be one question. The second question has to do with, as I was touring schools, it's, I think it's a pretty fair estimate that especially in our high schools, that the media center is used almost one half of the year for testing purposes. And I'm trying to figure out if Dr. Jarrah or Dr. Jenkins has any data on this part. And that is, in addition to a kid's regular tests and quizzes and their regular classes, they're being tested often in the, in the media centers and other places. And in the pie graph where it talks about the, how a child can score high on achievement tests, one of them is student motivation. It's a 15% factor, and I'm just wondering, do we have data on our kids getting tired of testing? Is the motivation factor for them high when they take these tests? Are they prepared? Are they, what is going on with that if we have any data like that?
All right, Dr. Jenkins?
To the first question, Mr. Roach, if you're asking me to predict what the state will do, I certainly cannot. I can't predict what the state will do this year. I think it's a, I think we're at an important crossroads in Florida, and I think it's critical that state board be very deliberative in their discussions, but I cannot tell you what they're going to do by the time whatever outcomes are produced this year. But I believe because it's a transition year, it'd be a fine time to do away with any penalties around testing during this transition. But I am in no place to predict what the state might do. I wish I could. Secondly, I'm not aware of any means of collecting student data around motivation or fatigue around testing. I'm not aware of any such collection in the state, but I'm certainly happy to look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Did I answer your questions? Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regard to the parent, more involvement and awareness, I would ask that it be brought, this type of plan be brought to the SACs. You know, I'd like to see the SACs get rejuvenated, really inform the parents during those meetings of what a SAC is and this type of information coming through, through it. So certainly I'd like to see this explained to the parents on the SAC and the other members that are a part of that type of organization too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Well, Dr. Jenkins, thank for this presentation again. Dr. Jarrah, you know, I will say, a lot of work has gone into this, Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jarrah, and I'm aware of that. I, you know, just to add my two cents, it is frustrating that we'll be right back here in another year, year and a half, whether it's under the park standards or whether it's under the ACT or whatever measure the state chooses to adopt. And that's frustrating for us as a school system because we take a great deal of pride in the work these men and women in the audience do, and we take a great deal of pride in being a high-performing, large urban school district, and in our estimation, one of the best large urban school districts in the state of Florida, if not the country. So thank you all for all the work you do for our children and our students. And it is a little bit of frustrating to this board and to myself that we do have a constantly moving target, but we'll know that we'll always rise to the occasion thanks to the hard work of a lot of folks. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. All right. We are now going to go into our regular agenda. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements before we go into it. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by completing an appropriate yellow form at the board table by Ms. McGill. The form looks as such as this. A number of you have already filled it out. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to testify before the board. It is not a question and answer session, nor is it an opportunity to engage in debate with the board. Staff is available to meet with you, and after you speak, should you have questions? And board members are always happy to meet with you after the meeting should you wish to discuss your issues of concern with them. And I think I speak for our entire board when I say that we'll all hang around after the meeting if you do want to speak with us one-on-one. When you do come up to speak, you will have three minutes to address the board. We ask that you abide by rules of parliamentary procedure and that, to the extent possible, you not use names. This is a government proceeding, no different than a county commission meeting, a city council meeting, or if you've ever been in the legislature, a legislative committee meeting, or a congressional committee meeting, meaning no clapping is allowed in the rules, in accordance with the rules of parliamentary procedure. You can certainly indicate your approval by waving your hands, which I always feel foolish saying myself because I know it seems a little bit sophomoric, but it's the way that we maintain decorum in this chamber. I know we have a number of folks out there with young children, so if you have schedule constraints or you need to get home and put your young children to bed, if you'll sort of come up here and let Ms. McGill know that you're one of those with young children, I'll try to put your card, if you'd like me to, at the head of the speaker list so you can speak first and can leave after you give your testimony if that's your desire. Dr. Jenkins, it's my understanding we don't have any newly appointed administrators to recognize tonight. Okay. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda at this time as suggested by myself. Can I have a motion to do so? It's been booed by Mrs. Gordon, it's been seconded by Vice Chair Moore. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda as proposed, please say aye. Aye. I'll oppose nay. Show that agenda adopted. All right. We are now on item 3.01. This is a public hearing portion of the meeting. And let me make another preliminary announcement on the public hearing portion of the meeting. All board meetings are videotaped and aired on Orange TV in their entirety with the exception of student discipline and employee matters. Keeping with school board policy, if a speaker refers to a student discipline case or employee matter, his or her comments will not be included in the broadcast version of the board meeting. So that really doesn't apply to this portion, but it will be later to the employee matters. The first item is agenda item 3.1. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn that over to you to, I presume, turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Chairman. Per our normal schedule, it is time to have our discussion and final acceptance of the annual budget. Want to remind board members and certainly for the sake of the public at large, budgeting actually takes a much longer process that Mr. Collins will review with you. It is a plan on how to expand projected revenues. And so what we will cover tonight, as we do each year and as other school systems do, includes both the presentation of the proposed millage, presentation of the proposed budget, time for public comments, board discussion, and then adoption of the total millage and adoption of the 1314 annual budget. I want to stress, as always, the budget reflects the board's priorities that are discussed throughout the year. It is a living document as well. The board can certainly have amendments in future iterations of the budget. It is never static. It is a living document based on the board and the district's priorities. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about property taxes. We have to talk about that because that's where a lot of our revenues come from in order to fund our budget. Property taxes are actually a function of assessed value, exemptions, and the millage rate. And there's a group of various entities that actually end up establishing the amount of your property taxes. The property appraiser actually establishes the assessed value. The state legislature establishes exemptions, and then the state legislature, in combination with the school board, actually establishes the millage rate for the upcoming year. Now fortunately, the property tax base here in Orange County is finally starting to turn around. And you can see here, the red dot shows the forecast tax base for Orange County Public Schools. That's the school taxable values that our millage will be applied to. And you can see that that's actually up about 3.5%. So that's, that's very good. We're very happy to see that finally starting to turn around after many years of going through those downturns in the property values. So that's a good thing. Going forward, looking at the millage rate, these are the proposed millage rates for I'll go through each one so you understand what each one is. I've explained it before, but I want to make sure that there are no questions about it. The required local effort rate is the rate that the state says that you must levy in order to receive any state funds. It's part, it funds the Florida Education Finance Program. And so in order to participate in receiving any state funding, you must levy the 5.114 mills. You can't levy more, you can't levy less. You must levy 5.114 mills in order to participate. You also have the discretion to levy up to .748 mills. The state legislature establishes that maximum discretionary millage. You cannot levy more than .748 mills, and thus the recommendation from staff is to levy that full amount. You also have an additional voted millage, we call it the special millage, of one mill that was approved by the voters back in 2010 for a period of not to exceed four years. And so that particular millage is also included in your operating millage for a total of 6.862 mills for your operating budget. And then you have 1.5 mills for your capital projects budget. The 1.5 mills, remember back when we went out to the voters with the sales tax referendum back in 2002? We said, okay, we're going to roll back the property tax millage for capital projects to 1.5 mills. And we will keep that 1.5 mills in place throughout the sales tax until it expires. And it expires in December of 2015. Now, in the interim time, the state has actually rolled back the rates in the capital projects area. So now the maximum amount that this school board can levy is the 1.5 mills. So currently, what we're proposing is the maximum millage that you can levy by law without going through another referendum process to go out to the voters for approval for something different than what you have before you. The rollback rate, we have to advertise and talk about the rate that we're proposing as compared to the rollback rate. And I'll read this for you. It's the rate when applied to the current tax rule after adjusting or reducing for the new growth produces the same revenues as the prior year. And in other words, you're trying to eliminate the escalating values of property from the calculation of your taxes. And so when you look at your millage, you have to compare it to that rollback rate. When you do that, the required local effort area is .47% over the rollback rate, and your total millage is 1.34% over the rollback rate. And that's solely attributable to increase in property values. Because if you recall, going back here, your required local effort rate actually goes down, and your overall millage rate actually goes down, but you still advertise an increase over the rollback rate. That's just required by law. Okay. Now what's the impact on your typical homeowner? For somebody who owns a piece of property worth $150,000, based on the increase over the rollback rate, it's about a $19 increase. Now, if you were only looking, if that property did not increase in value at all, if the property owner stayed in the home and it did not increase in value, based solely on the change in rate, that that property owner would actually pay $14.50 less. So I just wanted to clarify that. The $19 is really attributable to the increase in value of the property, not based on the increase in the rate because the rates actually went down. Now, looking at a commercial, a piece of commercial property worth a million dollars, similar situation, they actually have a $110 increase because of the increased value of the property. But if you looked at that same property based solely on the change in rates, it would be actually a $116 reduction in the amount of taxes paid. So there again, the, any tax increases that the property owners will be paying will be solely attributable to their increase in value of that property. Okay, now let's go right into the discussion on the annual budget. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this timeline so that the board understands and everyone else understands the process. And Dr. Jenkins did a great job of explaining that the budget is really an ongoing process. It really doesn't stop. It's something that, we have specific timelines that we have to comply with in order to adopt a budget based on the TRIM guidelines, but it's really an ongoing process and it does literally go on year-round. If you look at the fall, this board generally establishes legislative priorities. You'll establish a legislative agenda, and you'll receive community input. We'll have a bunches and bunches of work sessions during the, during the fall on varying subjects, but all of those subjects that you're having work sessions on have impacts on the budget. So as you're making decisions through that work session process, we're incorporating those decisions into the budget that we're preparing for the upcoming year. We also had a series of budget committee meetings. We met with our, some of our union members and received input on their priorities. We met between the months of November and April in order to accomplish that. So we had several meetings to receive that input. The governor's budget then came out in February. Then the final EDR forecast, Economic and Demographic Research, is the group that does the statistical forecasting for the state legislature. They came out with their final forecast in March that the legislature used through their session, and they were in session March and April and finished up with their final, they finally approved the budget in April, and it finally closed the session in early May. Also, keep in mind that we have to do our initial school allocations in early April in order to meet our reappointment timeline. So this process is kind of... So this process is kind of ongoing already in the springtime. So we're already making decisions on, okay, what are we doing as far as staffing our schools and providing resources to our schools? And so many of the decisions, like with the ESE changes that we made, we incorporated those into that allocation process early on so that that would be in place for this coming year that we're already in. Of course, we had some budget work sessions that went on. And then, the proposed millage and budget was advertised July 25th, public hearing July 30th, and here we are at the second of the public hearings in order to adopt the millage and the final budget. Now, a couple of things, I'm trying to answer some of the questions that we got too between the, after the last tentative budget as well. One of the questions was, well, why don't we have the final expenditure numbers in order to take action on the budget? And part of that is because the timeline for the submission of your annual financial report is actually September 11th. Keep in mind, in order to close out a fiscal year, our fiscal year ends June 30th, you have to accrue your expenditures that occur, some of your expenditures actually occur in July, but there are four purchases that occurred back in June. So you actually have to record those expenditures back in June. So you have to, anytime invoices come in after the end of the fiscal year, you have to look at those invoices, see if they were applicable to the prior year, and if they were, you have to post those expenditures back. So there's a timeline that goes into August that we would be doing that, accruing those expenditures back to the previous year. Also, we would also, we also have to record, based on generally accepted accounting principles, using a modified accrual basis of accounting, you have, actually have to accrue revenues for up to 60 days after the end of the fiscal year if those revenues were attributable to the prior year. So we have to keep our books open through August to accrue revenues, and then we close our books, produce the annual financial report, and have to have it shipped up to Tallahassee by September 11th. So that's sort of the timeline on the preparation of the annual financial report. There were also some questions about the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the final version of our expenditures for the fiscal year. That's after the audit, and after any adjustments have to take place in that annual financial report to get to the final, the final expenditure numbers. Based on the rules of the Auditor General, and also based on the guidelines put out by the Office of Management and Budget in Washington, that has to take place within nine months of the end of your fiscal year. We try to get that thing issued at least within six months because we always apply for the Certificates of Excellence in Financial Reporting by either ASBO or by both ASBO, as well as the GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association. So we have to have our CAFER prepared by December 31st in order to comply with their schedule. So it's an extensive process of finalizing your final expenditures after year end. So I just wanted to make sure that the Board understands that we don't just turn around on June, on July 1st and crank out a financial report, and that's it. We actually have to comply with financial reporting standards. One other thing that I wanted to briefly mention, there's been some discussion about fund balance. I'm just going to briefly touch on it at this point. The fund balance that's used, that is the final results of operations from the 2012-13 fiscal year, that's in the annual financial report, that's actually on your agenda tonight. You have a total fund balance that is in, let's just talk about the general fund for now. You have a total fund balance. Now, of that fund balance, some of that fund balance is already obligated for things, like in your ending fund balance would be things like your school budgets that are left over at the end of the year. Well, they're just going to roll forward to the next year. You have some categorical funds. Those are left over at the end of the year. They're going to roll forward for the same purposes they were appropriated. And you have some encumbrances, purchase orders that were issued. They're going to roll forward and be paid for in the next year. So there's a lot of obligated portions of your fund balance. And then of the portion that's not obligated, you're going to have your 3% contingency that you request that we set aside to protect the Board against unforeseen circumstances. And then anything left over would be what we call nonrecurring funds. Those funds are set aside to take care of nonrecurring types of expenditures. Some of the examples of what we use those funds for are things like your digital curriculum pilot. If you recall, we had a discussion the end of last year about starting up that digital curriculum pilot, and you approved that we move forward with doing that using nonrecurring funds. And that's what we used it for. The teacher professional development modules this past summer, we used nonrecurring funds to pay for that one-time cost. The security upgrades, we spent about $6 million on some of the security upgrades. That was nonrecurring. Some of the bonuses that have been paid historically, we did that. Going back to 2007-8, we had a mid-year revenue adjustment by the state legislature. If you guys have been around a while, remember that. It was over a $30 million adjustment in revenues. We used our nonrecurring dollars that year to preserve jobs. We kept people employed for the remainder of the year until we could start adjusting our operational levels to match up with our recurring operational levels to match up with our recurring revenues. So I just wanted to go through that sort of process so you understand how the budget and the annual financial report kind of tie together. But they don't really tie together because you're not going to, you're not planning on using those residual nonrecurring dollars to pay for any kind of recurring expenditures going forward. That's what we always talk about, trying to use recurring revenues for recurring costs going forward. So that's what we always try to budget for. The budget summary maintains the focus on the district's strategic plan and accelerating our momentum. It preserves academic programs, retains highly qualified teachers, and protects arts, athletics, and student activities. If you recall, that was the purpose of that one-mill special millage, complies with Board policies as well as state and federal requirements. And it also includes the impact of our collaborative bargaining process to date. So everything that this Board has approved as far as funds for the collaborative bargaining process are incorporated into this budget. Looking at the summary of the five funds, we've been through this before. General Fund, it's basically for operations, debt services for payment of long-term debt, capital projects. This is where the major change occurred between the tentative and the final budget. We actually included projects that were in progress at June 30th. We amended those projects into this budget so that you see them under the 2013-14 numbers now. Special Revenue is your food service program and an internal service. I'll talk a little bit about each one of these budgets going forward. The General Fund, $1.7 billion is the operating budget. Primary funding source is the FEFP, Florida Education Finance Program. There is an equalization process that takes place statewide, and the revenues are primarily from sales taxes and property taxes. Let's look at the revenue side of, the revenue for our operating budget is primarily generated by the number of students that we have. This is the FTE, Full-Time Equivalent Membership, actual and forecast out into the future. You'll notice that that last dot out there for 2013-14 is about 185,000 students. That's what we're planning on having this year. But if you look at the FEFP documents, they only show about 184,000 students, and that's because of what we talked about earlier with virtual education, where they're actually limiting the amount of FTE that can be earned for one student to one FTE, even if he's taking classes at Florida Virtual School at night, weekend, summer. We actually get ding when that happens, and they actually reduce our FTE by that amount that they're earning. It's basically a proration that takes place between us and the Florida Virtual School. And Mrs. Moore, I know you asked a question before about what would have happened if they had fully funded this. The equivalent would have been about another $10 million in additional money. But I will say that the legislature only had a certain amount of money that they were going to appropriate anyway, and so the base student allocation would have been lowered accordingly. So I just thought I'd mention that. The next slide is the, you've seen this before. Again, the overall funding has now finally started to increase. You can see how we've struggled over the last several years in the various, this is funding per student. This year, that increase that you see there of $6,679.69 is the regular funding. The 462 is the special millage funding. Of that $333 increase in the blue section, $275 of that is attributable solely to the teacher salary categorical that's within the FEFP and the retirement rate increase. There was a 34% increase in your retirement rate this year for regular class employees, and we're having to cover that cost going forward. Looking at this slide, it looks like we've almost recovered back to where we were back in '07-'08. But if you try, if you actually take these numbers, if you take the number back in 2007-8, and you inflate it just based on the Consumer Price Index, you can see that we've actually lost about $1,089 in purchasing power from 2007-8 to, up to today. And today's numbers do include the one-mill special millage in the gold bar right there. So we're not back. We're making progress, we're getting back there, starting to increase, but we're not back there yet. Percentage of state general revenue going to education, you can see here that the number's around 53%. Used to be up over 60% years ago. Lottery, busy slide, but essentially what I'm trying to show here is that about 31% of the lottery dollars, which is the green bar, is going towards K-12 education. Of that 31%, 27% is for school recognition, 12% is for helping to support our post-secondary program, and then 61% is just for basic funding of our K-12 program. It's not supplementing anything, it's just regular funding. So people always ask, well, didn't the lottery provide all that extra money for you? And the answer is, not really. Now, the state revenues did go up slightly this year as a percentage of our total funding. It went up about 1.5%. So it was about a 1.5% shift between local and to state. And the answer is, well, why did that happen? And it's because of the teacher salary categorical that's contained within the FEFP. So that's primarily why that state portion went up this year. Okay. Looking at your appropriations, the school budget allocation formulas are clearer this year. We talked about that quite a bit before, and they also include a slight increase. The department allocations are generally the same except for some of the realignment that Dr. Jenkins approved over in the curriculum and instruction area. Some of the major cost increases for this year that's contained within this budget is the fiscal year 2014 Compensation Plan. That's huge. That we mentioned earlier, there's about $33 million that is in that teacher salary categorical that is part of the FEFP program. The FRS rate changes represent about an $18 million increase. I mentioned earlier, it's about a 34% increase in the rate itself, so it's a huge increase in impact on the district. Health insurance adjustments, the school board is picking up approximately $13 million increase in the healthcare costs. By contract, this Board has to pick up up to 10% of any increase in costs, and the increase was 9.5%. So the Board picked up the full cost of the health insurance adjustments for this year. The additional cost of one new elementary school is about $1 million for the operations of that elementary school. First year of a new student system implementation is about $9.4 million. So that's one of the significant costs that we will be incurring. Expanded high school summer guidance, that's something that the Board had discussed, about Expanded professional development, we've talked about that, about $1.3 million in recurring and about $13.8 million in nonrecurring funds. Expanded safety, security, then the digital curriculum pilot, we've talked about that. This is the functional breakdown of your budget. You can see that there's, we're maintaining consistency in the various functional areas, no significant variability within your functional categories. And then looking at your other budgetary impacts, you know, some of the large impacts is your digital curriculum and other instructional materials. The full impact will be felt in 2015-16 when we have to use at least half of the instructional materials for digital content. I think we've made a commitment to go at least 75% of our instructional materials towards that purpose. Virtual education FTE, we talked about that, where it actually reduces our regular FTE. Dual enrollment, where we're actually having to pay some of the tuition for college, especially the community colleges. We continue to work with our community colleges to contain those costs. Continue pressure on the general fund due to reduced federal grants as required by sequestration. Keep in mind, sequestration, the federal sequestration impacts us directly, and it will continue to impact us directly for the next 10 years. It's not just a one-year thing. It started this year, this budget cycle, and it will continue for nine more years. So those federal reductions that Washington is implementing as part of sequestration will start, will continue to impact us over the next 10 years. Healthcare changes, huge. Healthcare changes, the current guidelines for healthcare reform is well over 100,000 pages now and growing. We're trying to adapt as we can to conform, and we will just continue to try to do that as far as we can. But that will have a significant impact on the cost of providing healthcare services to our employees. Future issues, the assessment process for Common Core, I know Dr. Jenkins mentioned Park or whatever we, the assessment process is, that will have an impact on our future budget. Performance pay will have an impact on our future budget. Continued implementation of healthcare reform, the federal budget sequestration out into the future. The end of the Race to the Top Grant, that grant ends this year, at the end of this year. So that money will go away. And then, of course, the huge one here is the conclusion of your special millage revenue after the 2014-15 fiscal year. So we've got it this year, we've got it next year, then it goes away unless there's a future action by this Board and by the citizens of Orange County. Capital Projects Fund, $1.3 billion. Again, it's for construction of our capital facilities. Point out that the minimal state support for this program and no state PICO funds for the third straight year in this area. This shows the budgeted capital revenues going forward. The green area here, I guess that's green up there on the screen, shows the sales tax dollars, and you can see that they actually go away in the 14-15 fiscal year. So that will have a dramatic impact on our ability to construct facilities going forward. This shows the use of our capital funds forecast for the upcoming year. I will say that we are, in fact, starting to utilize some of the capital renewal dollars in this budget going forward. About $21 million of our capital renewal dollars will be used going forward for this upcoming year. Five-year new school openings, you can see the list here. Of course, Sunblaze Elementary opened this August, as well as the swing school over off Hackney Prairie Road. We don't have a school opening in 2014, and then you can see going forward, going into the next five years. The Comprehensive Projects Plan, we've talked about this. Right now, this budget shows completion through project number 93, plus the addition of Washington Shores Elementary School. And this is the list of the projects that are under construction for 2014. These are the projects that are in design, including the Paramore Area K-8 that has, currently has an August 2017 planned occupancy. Some of the other capital issues to keep in mind is that our ability to issue additional COPs is still limited. You did see the tax base starting to rebound, though. So with the tax base starting to rebound, at some point in the future, the Board may have some more flexibility once we start to rebound enough to be able to cover have some more flexibility once we start to rebound enough to be able to cover the debt service on additional certificates of participation. The facilities condition index has been completed, and I mentioned the use of capital renewal funds. And then we are embedding some capital renewal or capital expenditures for safety and security within the construction and renovation of some of our, our facilities. Debt service fund, again, a $204 million budget is basically where we accumulate money to pay off our long-term debt. Special revenue fund, this only contains the food service portion, no increase in the rates for this, this coming year. Internal service fund, the total budget's $260 million. Used to account for the employee benefit, trust fund, property casualty loss fund, and printing services. The benefit trust fund, that's where we pay for our health insurance program. We are self-insured, and that program is about $224 million. It's funded by board contribution for the employees. We talked about the rates there, and it's also the deductions for our dependents that goes into this fund to pay claims. The benefits remain essentially the same for 2013, '14, and like I said, it includes about a 9.5% increase in district contributions. The property casualty fund, that's where we pay for our property insurance, our liability, workers' comp claims, and this is funded through charges to our other budgets. And then, of course, we have our printing services that operates as an internal fund, internal service fund, where we actually do chargebacks to the other departments. Okay, the remaining actions that the board would be looking at tonight would be to obtain public comments, have board discussion, the adoption of the total millage, and that, that has to take place before the adoption of the annual budget, in that order. And I turn it back over to Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Just a couple of comments in addition. I wanted to remind the board and the general public of a fact concerning our, the growth of our fund balance, that it was an intentional savings of dollars rather than allowing for special projects. Anyone who was on the superintendent's cabinet realizes that fund balance from year to year was an opportunity for special one-time projects. And so for the last several years, Mr. Blocker said, absolutely not, don't bring me any projects we have to save for the fiscal cliff, as we were expecting to see a great loss in revenue. Thankfully, the additional mill from our community provided that we would not have to fall off of that significant cliff. It would have meant huge cuts in our budget to the tune of over $80 million. But I want to remind folks, the process normally would be at the end of the year in cabinet meetings when there was fund balance, a portion of it would be used for special projects. That went away for several years because we were saving for an expected fiscal cliff. So the savings did grow in our fund balance intentionally because of an impending fiscal cliff. We didn't want to have to lay off staff and lose significant programs. Once we realized we had the additional millage, we did start to increase some special projects, hence, as Mr. Collins has mentioned, our digital project, our professional development for our teachers. We are very hopeful, but time will tell whether or not there is an increase that continues in the state economy that helps us to recover that entire $85 million. Time will only tell as projections get closer on that matter, but I'd like for folks to understand that. We're also certainly very pleased with the management of our capital dollars and certainly pleased that this board will be moving forward with asking voters for an extension of our sales tax to take care of those schools that still need to be renovated in our community. In summary, your budget that is presented tonight, as we are required legislatively to provide you a balanced budget, it maintains a focus on the district strategic plan, it preserves academic programs, retains highly qualified teachers, protects the arts, athletics, and student activities, it complies with board policies as well as state and federal requirements, and it includes the impact of the collaborative bargaining process to date as provided by the board. Mr. Chairman.
All right, board members, here's what we're going to do. We've got 14 speakers lined up, so what we're going to do first, as we always do, is first take any questions from the board of Mr. Collins, then take any preliminary comments that the board may wish to make, and then we're going to go to the speakers, and then we're going to come back to 15 speakers now. So I'll lead off, I'd punch my button. Mr. Collins, the timeline that you began your presentation with, is that a timeline that all 67 school districts in this state abide by?
Yes, sir. The only difference could be in the area of the financial reporting. If you have a, a school district who only reports an annual financial report, they still have to comply with the September 11th date because that's a state requirement. If they, you don't have to produce a CAFR, a comprehensive annual financial report. We do, and those timelines are established by other folks. So if another school district or another, well, another school district, if they, if they produce a CAFR, they would be under those same timelines. And the timeline for that, remember, is based on the end of the fiscal year. If you're a, if you're a county government, for instance, a county government generally has a fiscal year end of September 30th, so their timeline would start September or October 1 and go forward for six months if they want to apply for any of the financial reporting certificates.
Okay.
So it is similar to, for everybody.
And, and I think it's important for the audience to confirm for me, if this is right, Mr. Collins, that we begin this process typically in the spring with briefings by you on the revenue picture and the revenue outlook. And then there was a previous board meeting in July where we took up the budget for the first time. So members of the audience, if it doesn't seem like there's a lot of questions on the budget, it's because we've already gone through a detailed presentation, a question and answer session on the budget.
And we actually had two work sessions in June on, on the budget as well.
Two work sessions in June, and on top of that, there is a standing budget committee that works on this issue all year round, led by Ms. Cadel. I'm going to make some preliminary comments, and, and they're really addressed to the folks in the audience, because I want to thank you all for showing up tonight. It affords us an opportunity to make some comments directly to you that typically in the collaborative bargaining process, we cannot make directly to you. And a number of you, in fact, including some of the speakers, have, have submitted emails to myself and others, and I know, I know you have some concerns. So I want to at least make some statements, and the speakers, of course, can respond to these when they, when they get up here. And they're all in the, in the guise of clarification. First of all, let me say preliminarily that myself and this entire board, we value our teachers immensely, and we are incredibly sympathetic and empathetic to the demands that have been placed upon you these last five or six years, most of which we have little to no control over as a local school board. And we have tried to show that appreciation through, through this process. You need to understand that if our expenditures in any budget year exceed our revenue to any substantial extent, then we are required by the state of Florida as a constitutional entity and as a school board to have a balanced budget. And what that means is that if we over-budget our expenditures as any given year, and there is a bit of projection that goes on in this, then midway through the year, we have to recapture that over expenditure. Now, in a school district, about 70% of our total operating budget are y'all, salaries and benefits. So if we exceed our revenue by any substantial extent, it's very, very important that you understand, and this has happened, not recent history, but this has happened in the history of school boards, especially some other school boards in this state, where then you have to make mid-year employee cuts because you certainly can't cut salary, so you have to cut people and you can't, have to cut positions. And I, I think I speak for the entire board when I say that that is an unacceptable posture for us to be in. So we try very, very hard to be accurate in our projections as much as we can. Any excess revenue that we have at the end of the year is rolled over into the next year's budget. And you should know that that excess revenue, which this year was about $33 million, is included in the latest offer that was made through the collaborative bargaining process. So no excess revenue is held in some separate account or some separate fund and built up to a great extent that is rolled over to the next year. You should know that there's been a lot of talk about the $2,500 raise that the governor proposed for teachers across the state, and it's an admirable, laudable goal. Unfortunately, the governor does not write the budget, the state legislature writes the budget. And having been a former appropriations chair in Tallahassee and a member of that legislature, I can tell you they're very jealous of that prerogative. And unfortunately, the state legislature did not appropriate enough money for the school districts to meet the governor's goal. In fact, of the $25 million that he allocated for OCPS for teacher raises, the legislature appropriated, it's not enough to meet the governor's target. And you should know that this board has chosen to allocate an additional $10 million over and above the allocation given to us by the Florida legislature to try to meet that target. And then the latest offer we have, the latest offer provided for all effective teachers to get $2,525 or more, and highly effective teachers to get over $3,000. There's another point, too, that's very, very complicated to make, and every time I've tried to explain it to the media, it's even complicated to try to explain it to the media, and they follow these issues very, very carefully. And that is, you need to understand that merit pay is kicking in next year. We have no control over merit pay. The legislature cannot impair contractual rights. And what that means in layman's terms, to take it out of legal speak, they cannot force a teacher in this audience who's currently on a professional services contract, or what the media likes to call tenure, which is a poor term because it's not tenure, they cannot force you out of that professional services contract. So what the legislature has done is they have said that starting next year, every single dollar allocated to a teacher who elects to remain under a PSC, if you're a 15-year teacher or a 20-year teacher and you don't want to leave your professional services contract, and you refuse to go to the merit pay system, we have no control over this. Every single dollar allocated to those teachers who remain under a PSC, you have to give a minimum of 50% more to every teacher who elects to go to merit pay and is rated effective, and you have to give a minimum of 75 to 100% more to every teacher who elects to go to the new merit pay system and is rated highly effective. And I'm taking this opportunity to explain that to you because one of the reasons we've made a two-year offer to the teachers in this room is to try to protect you to the best we can from the punitive aspects of that law, because they cannot impair the contract obligations, and if you're on a two-year contract and you're a PSC, at least for one year, you're protected under your PSC from the punitive or the penalty aspects of that law, which we have no control over starting in, in another year. The reserves, there's been a lot of questions about reserves. We are required by the state of Florida, or we will be taken over by the state of Florida. There was a neighboring district that came close to getting taken over to maintain a 3% reserve. We have about a $1.7 billion operating budget. You can do the math and figure out what our reserve has to be each year. It's got to be roughly somewhere in the range of 30 to 40, $40 million each and every year. We also have bond ratings, and we also try to be fairly conservative in this district, and I don't think this board will change in that approach, and we have found it more prudent to try to maintain a reserve of 4% to 5% to prevent against the vicissitudes of the economy and being taken over to, by the state. So some of the issues with regard to the arguments out about the reserve, you need to understand we have absolutely no control over. There's a little bit of a misperception out there that somehow, and this is probably the most frustrating point that I've heard made to me, that we're paying our administrators more than our teachers. Our administrators were given a contract and accepted one that's a 5.1% increase. The last offer, and I'm talking about the offer that's on the table as of six, eight weeks ago with the teachers, it may even be 10 or 12 weeks old now, was a 6.27% increase for our teachers. So anybody who's telling you that we're making you an offer less than the administrators, that's completely utterly untrue. Lastly, you should know, there's also a myth that sometimes I have to deal with, with teachers out there where they say, well, we haven't had a raise over the last eight years or the last nine years. You should know that when we go back and we look at the cumulative effect, and this board has bent over backwards even through the depths of the recession, to make sure that each and every year we provide our teachers with some form of an increase, some form of a bump, whether it's a bonus, whether it's a rise in the, in the step level, that there's been a 24%, if the current offer was accepted, a 24% cumulative increase in salary over the last nine years. Meanwhile, the Consumer Price Index during that period has risen by 16.3%. So we've exceeded the Consumer Price Index by 7.5%. Now, does that make up for what the legislature has done in terms of your increased retirement contribution? Does that make up for the increase in your health insurance premiums? Does that make up for the increase of your cost of living? No, it doesn't. And we're sympathetic to that. But the last point I want to make before I turn it over to my other board members, is there are a number of things that we have absolutely no control over at this board level. You heard the best budget presentation, we do not control revenue. We have absolutely no control over revenue and how much revenue we bring in. Our millage is set by the state, we're not allowed to exceed that cap in millage. The sales tax is set by the state, counties are not allowed to exceed that sales tax. In fact, probably many of you do not know this, Orange County is actually a net donor county. We actually send up more property tax millage and more in sales tax than we bring back for our local public school system. That's not unusual for the urban districts, but most of the urban districts are net givers because under the Florida Education Finance Program, that money is all sent to Tallahassee, both the millage and the sales tax, and then it's distributed on a per-student basis throughout the state of Florida, and there are net donor counties and there are net taker counties, and we historically have always been and continue to be a net donor county. We have no control over the retirement contribution and what's been laid at your feet of having to now contribute to your own retirement. That's a legislative mandate and dictate. We have no control over merit pay. You know, that's the most frustrating thing. I had a nice conversation, I went across the street before this meeting and chatted with a number of you, and I asked some of the teachers, hey, what's bothering you? And the one thing that came out was merit pay, retirement contribution. And I looked at this teacher, who was a very nice lady, and said, you do understand, we don't have any control over any of that. The legislature controls that. We have no control, unfortunately, over our healthcare costs. We've done our best to maintain our benefit levels. We're continuing to try to fight to maintain our benefit levels. I can tell you, we're like the little boy with a finger in the dyke, we're holding back a flood. We're losing that battle the same way pretty much every employer in the state of Florida and this country is losing the battle. Our healthcare costs continue to escalate dramatically, and it's very, very difficult. We don't have any control over Common Core. You know, a lot has been put upon y'all with regard to your additional training requirements with Common Core. We're trying to get our workforce, our, our teachers up to speed on the new requirements. We don't control that. That's a legislative decision. They've decided to adopt the Common Core standards along with 47 other states in this country. And by the way, 47 other states are going through the same pain of trying to adopt to those Common Core standards. And the last thing is, we don't control, and I've already said this, so I'm being repetitive, the revenue, the millage, or the sales tax rates. So I want to thank you all for coming down. I genuinely am looking forward to hearing your comments. This is a collaborative process, I think that's a very, very important point. I'll make you a confession, when I got on this board three years ago, I didn't know what that meant, because I didn't understand the difference between collective bargaining and collaborative bargaining. But we're trying to collaborate with you, we're trying to be transparent. If there's any information that you don't have that we can share with you, let us know, and we'll share that information with you. And eventually we'll get there, and hopefully we'll get there in a way that meets your satisfaction as well. Ms. Gold.
You know, I am glad that we're not sitting in some other counties right now, and I want to commend that. I come from a healthcare background, for those of you that don't know that. And if you look what's happening to hospitals and what just happened with one of our hospitals in this community and, and what's happened there, there are still impacts of the recession alive and well, and a lot of the tumultuous changes that are happening in healthcare. You know, that said, with that in mind, I'm looking at balance in the budget, and not only for this year, but for years going forward, because we don't know what's going to happen with some of these things that the taxpayers have voted on. And I'm on the west side of town, and we have tremendous growth. And I look, I have right now on my screen, the five-year projections of the schools, and I can tell you, I need two more schools that aren't on this list. And so that is another component that as we're not only working within this year, that we have to be forward-thinking about. Digital curriculum is another thing, you know, after seeing the impact even in the short few weeks of the pilot program, I think it's truly tremendous, the promise of what that can bring us. But with that promise comes a very high price tag, and we, we know that. So all of these things have to be balanced as we move forward and look at this. But our core is the team. I mean, none of the hardware works without the core of the team, and the heart of our team is our teachers. And, and I think the chairman said it well, when we, we all appreciate you very much. And I think the chairman said it well, when we, we all appreciate you very much, but we just want to make sure that, as we listen to comments tonight, that you know, I wanted you to know what some of the perspectives are that I'm looking at on the horizon as well, and how do we balance, you know, the decisions we make today for planning for the future at the same time, and protecting us at the same time.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Collins, I do have a couple of questions for you. Thank you for addressing those. While you're coming back up to the lectern, I just wanted to thank the superintendent on a couple of the cost increases, things that we did add. This is the first year I have ever gone through the first few weeks of school and not had a complaint from a high school parent about the guidance process and their schedules. And so that increased to our guidance teachers' bill of work over the summer, from what I'm hearing, and hopefully, the teachers out here are hearing as well, that was quite successful, and hopefully, the students had an additional week or two of learning, instead of sitting around waiting for a schedule change. The digital pilot was very innovative. We didn't see other districts being able to do that. And I know there was some data already coming out of McCoy High School that I saw today with remarkable drop in discipline referrals, because the students are so engaged now that they have their laptops, and so I'll be following that. So at this point, very, very pleased. Again, we have to be concerned with the digital mandates coming from the state, that we go through the process the most economical, efficient way possible, so we can save money for our teachers and not be forced for lack of funding, or another unfunded mandate from Tallahassee, when we hit 2017, that we don't have the money, and what are we going to do? We're required to go, you know, 50%, and Dr. Jenkins wants to go 75% of the curriculum given digitally. The question that I have for you is, on that one chart, well, actually, on all the charts with the teachers sitting here, I think it was challenging, and I've seen this presentation many, many times, and where do you reflect in all of this? Because I know we've offered raises, there's the raises for, that's already been approved and ratified by classified, and then, of course, administrators, and we're waiting to get a contract signed with the teachers. Where do you reflect this in the presentation? Where do you show that increase that's going out in salaries?
The overall salary increases are just, it's just incorporated into the overall budget numbers. So when I show the functional totals, the proposed salary increases are already incorporated into those numbers.
Well, maybe it would be helpful if we, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel, if we could, and I know it's difficult, because as the district's growing, you can't just give a base number. If we have more students, we've obviously hired more teachers. But maybe there's a way to reflect that increase somewhere in there, so they can see it. Because I know a lot of them have felt, wondering why they haven't had anything yet. Is it accounted for in the budget? Is it not a priority? Because you don't, we don't really see that in the presentation. So maybe that would be something that would help in the future for them to see that we actually did allocate through the process money for raises, and it is there because it is our priority. The other question is, on the comment where you talked about CPI, and how, I think it was page number, is it slide 18, where you showed the difference between the CPI and the amount of money per student, where we're over $1,000 difference of trying to continue the level of service, to continue their salaries, to give them increases, yet we're not keeping up with CPI. How have we managed to continue to give raises? How have we managed to do that in spite of that really decreased per pupil because of CPI?
Several ways. If you recall back in the 2008, '09 fiscal year, this board made substantial recurring adjustments to your recurring costs, to the tune of an excess of $70 million. So in order to get your budget back in alignment with the planned recurring revenues, this board made some substantial reductions in, across the board, in many areas, to the tune of, like I said, in excess of $70 million. We have continued to hold fast on many of those reductions, and to continue to operate more efficiently. We've continued to try to, in all of our departmental areas, take as much advantage of our technology as possible, and keep our costs down. So that's how we've been able to sort of keep pace, by not expanding at the rate that the Consumer Price Index has.
All right, thank you. And I'll reserve any comments until after we hear from the teachers tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone for being here. You're the ones who really pay attention to what's going on, and I appreciate that. So one of the comments I'm going to make, is probably you all know this already, but if you're not, I found it to be very eye-opening, when I first became a school board member, was just what that budgeting cycle and funding system meant. So that the legislature passes a budget, or an allocation, and then, I guess, we pull it down monthly, but then there's these different times of the year, where then they, what is it, the revenue conference that says exactly where they are, so if it's under, over, you know, they adjust it. So it's projections, really, all through the year. It's really not until the year finishes that you really knew what your full amount was. So, I mean, obviously, I'm stumbling through it, but it's very eye-opening. So if you haven't had that, and probably most of you have seen that, I don't mean to be preaching to the choir here, but it's worth looking at. Did I explain that somewhat?
Yeah, I think you were.
Mr. Collins?
I think you were referring to the FEFP surveys.
Right.
Because you have the FTE counts in October and February, and there are numerous, actually now, multiple FTE surveys that occur throughout the year, that alter the amount of funding that the district receives.
We don't get just that big bulk of funding at one time. I guess that's what, you know, we don't just, the legislature passes it, and there it is.
Right. And then, from a cash flow perspective, the state funding is distributed twice a month to.
Twice a month?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Here's what I did want to ask. In regard to the federal sequestration, I think it is in regard to IDEA funding, that we're looking at possible declines in the Title I and all the titles. So when that, and as you said, it's over 10 years, if those funds are lower, and we don't receive 100% funding when it comes to IDEA anyway, where do we dip down to for those funds? I have a feeling, but I just want to make sure that.
Well, I'll give you sort of a two-part answer. There are planned increases in state fund, or federal funding, in some of those programs, but there are reductions in the planned growth, in the expansion of those programs. So even though every year, there's going to be a reduction, the reduction is really over what the planned growth was going to be, but there will be an impact on each one of those programs, Title I, IDEA, and all of the federally funded programs. And so we will just have to continue to try to operate as efficiently as possible in those areas, and then we will have to start prioritizing which of those services may have to be shifted over to the general fund, if we want to continue some of them. So if we have to reduce something over here, we may have to shift it.
So are you anticipating that, though?
Yes.
And about, I mean, do you have an idea of how much that could be?
Well, the anticipated amount of the reductions, I believe, is somewhere around $8 million a year, I believe was the anticipated reduction for this year that we're in. So if you look at something comparable to that going forward, you're talking somewhere in that ballpark of about an $8 million reduction per year going forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I think that's significant for us to keep an eye on. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm well aware of the budget presentation, and I thank Mr. Collins. I think Mrs. Flynn alluded to portions, that I wanted to say, it is an ongoing process. I do sit on the Budget Committee. I am going to make a recommendation from this meeting with the Budget Committee, with this many in the audience today, there's what we call association representatives. And I'm usually the association representative at my school, and I've been one since 1967. So that tells you, I've been an association rep for a very long time. I would like to say this, I think we are missing the boat, because when you made a statement, Mr. Chairman, about collaborative and collective, and how well you've become well-versed on it, I feel I'm an expert on it, and I've always said it, since I've served with Mr. Collins on the bargaining team in Osceola, and I've also served on the bargaining team in Orange, when I served as Vice President of the Union. I really want to say to the board, and I've said it before, I would like to even say to the audience, when you do not understand the process of collective and collaborative bargaining, and the leadership doesn't totally understand it, then this is what you get. You are teachers. You really need to be home. That's what you have your persons there for. It is very important that you are very informed from the time, can you put that slide up, and then you could come back to the remaining action? There's one slide that's very important. And if you're not following this, your leadership needs to follow it, and collaborative bargaining is not confrontational. It is confrontational in the back room. It is confrontational behind closed doors. When we took up collaborative and collective bargaining, and got rid of collective bargaining, and went into collaborative bargaining, we expected the union and the board team to bring us back something that we could vote on. When we did that, we never had to have you out from your homes. All of us got to go in in the morning. Some of us are on the road at 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock. I'm on the road at 6:00, trying to get to my job by 6:30. Collaborative bargaining would not allow us to do this. The reason why I'm saying it, it is very important that you become involved with the budgeting process. Go back when you started in, when we started in March, and April, February. Can you pull that back up? It's like the first, second slide?
I can't, it's hung up, I can't get it to move.
Okay, if it's hung up, don't worry about it. I think you saw it. That's when you have got to get involved. There must be, within this process, Mr. Chairman and board members, that we have got to include a meeting with the association rep, so that they can have a voice as to the process, because with the Budget Committee, which is not the collaborative team, the Budget Committee doesn't have anything to really do with that. The Budget Committee just, we have two representatives, generally from the board, and then we have two from the OS, well, the OS and CTA. The meeting needs to be taken probably to the teachers and the OS, for staff and association reps, so that they can understand the process. You are supposed to go in the back room, wheel and deal, knock out, drag out, then come and bring us what you want. When you walk out of that room together as a collaborative team, you're saying to CTA, OS, and this board, this is what we want. We're not totally in agreement with it, but we must move on with our lives, and this is what we're going to settle on. If we're going to get into confrontational, collective bargaining on this budget, it becomes a process where we are, I'm against you, you're against me, and we're constantly arguing with each other, and nobody gets a salary. I am a teacher. I want my salary. I expect my union to negotiate my salary. I expect my union to come to me in a timely manner, so I can be home at night, preparing for the children, us young adults, that need us in the morning. So my point on this budget, which I'm well informed, because I followed this budget process, this board followed the budget process all year long, and we should have come together, we could say, "No, this is not what I'm satisfied with. No, this is not what I'm satisfied with. Is this the best that CTA has? Is this the best that the board have?" And then, whatever you decide, you get your body, you get your association rep, get that information back to the school, then you collaboratively come together and say, "This is it. This is what we're going to do." But we are never to be up here arguing with each other, passing out things in the audience that's not privileged for the board. What is passed out at the board, I mean, out in the audience, the board should have. That is not collaborative bargaining. And I've said this over, listen, it is not collaborative. You have a team. We have a team. All of us get to speak to our teams and send our team messages. We've got to come together on a salary. And all of the information should be on the table, that you would be able to negotiate, and when it hits the board table, the board doesn't have to do anything but approve it, and that's what we've done in the past with collaborative bargaining. And I wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. We've been sitting here two hours. Why don't we do this before we go to speakers? Let's take a 10-minute break. We're going, come back. All right. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocps.net, or call 407-317-3200.
All right, let's go ahead, and board members, take a seat. We'll start up again. Audience members, if you could settle down, we'll get going. If everybody could take a seat. Sooner we all get a seat, the sooner we can get started. I know you all want to get out of here.
We want to be heard.
Want to be heard. Thank you. All right. Y'all, let me explain something. We've all been doing this a long time. I've done probably dozens upon dozens of hearings like this, zoning hearings with three times the number of people in here. It was meant as a courtesy to y'all. I've never before had an audience object to taking a 10-minute break after two hours of sitting down, to allow them to go to the bathroom and get a drink of water. I'll be very, very candid with you, and we need to set the ground rules now. If you had just all shaken your head and said you wanted to go, I probably would have kept going. But whenever we have an outburst like that, the procedure is, we always recess the meeting until everybody can settle down, okay? We usually don't allow in, and we're doing everything we can to accommodate y'all. We usually don't allow in props and foam fingers like we've allowed, but I know your union went to a lot of trouble to use those. You can bring them in. I will tell you, next meeting, it won't be allowed, it's against our board policies, but I didn't want to tell you all after you had them made up. If you don't like the process, and I see a lot of shaking heads, I respect that, but you don't have to come testify if you don't like the process. These are the rules that we're going to abide by, and if we have to, if things get out of hand, we will recess the meeting. And in three years, I haven't had to throw anybody out of a meeting yet, but there's always a first time. always a first time. Okay? We will run this meeting with decorum, whether y'all like that or not. So those are the rules. I want to make sure we're all on the same page before we start. Now, I have four parents who have children here who have asked to speak first, so if you put in a card early and you're wondering why these folks are ahead of you, that's why, because they have young children. I'm going to give you the order in groups of five. It's going to be Angela Curry, followed by Cassandra Yenart, followed by Denise Diaz, followed by Lisa Marie Lewis, followed by Leona Rockman. So as each speaker gets up to the well, if you can sort of be moving down front and be ready or on deck to go next. When you come up to speak before us, again, you'll have three minutes. You'll see that there's a clock there. Please start your presentation, the speech. The clock will not start to run until you've stated your name and your home address for the record. And just so you know, your name and your home address is a statutory requirement. It's why we require you to do that. So Ms. Curry, thank you for your patience. Welcome to the School Board, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Angela Curry, and currently I am actually homeless. The address I am using for record is 1710 White Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32806. I am here, first, I'd like to say thank you for letting me speak and that I am a product of Orange County Public Schools. I went to Blenner, Pershing, Conway, Edgewater, and Boone High School. I'm also a daughter of two high school dropouts that put herself through college, saw drug dealing, you name it, crack, everything, had guns in my possession at the age of 13. I chose to take myself out of that environment because of my third-grade teacher, Andrea Parker at Blenner Elementary. I'm sorry. I chose, at that same time when I went to UCF, to work in Orange Center Elementary School. I also chose to get a job at Eccleston Elementary in 2001 under Ruthie Hannah, and I am now at West Oaks Elementary, all of which are Title I schools. And I chose that because of my childhood. At the same time, in the past few years, and I know there are things you cannot control, just like there's always things I cannot control. I do not pick the curriculum. I teach the skills. But there are things that you can do because as a single mom, a current, a new single mom, I have had to give up my home. I have had to stay in a car I've had for 12 years that is a two-door with two children. I've had to work extra jobs, do whatever I can. I go to bed at 11 o'clock at night. I get up at 5:00 in the morning, all just so I can take care of these two young children and the 18 children I have in my classroom each and every year. In the past few years, I have taken an average cut of about $7,500 to $10,000. I used to bring home a good 45,000 to 46,000, and I'm lucky if I make 36 now as a 13-year veteran. I understand that also has to do with the fact that I've missed a few having babies. But at the same token, there are different circumstances that have come into play that caused me to not make money that I used to. I can't afford to do tutoring. I can't afford to go get a $9 job like I used to at Coach Outlet Mall to make that extra money to make my ends meet because daycare right now costs me $1,200 a month on top of the 7, or the $350 I pay for health insurance. If you add that up, I pay out over $1,500 a month and bring home $2,000, hence why I am homeless. I also do not qualify for food stamps or WIC or anything else because if you look at my salary and average it out 12 months, I make entirely too much money. Graciously, I live with a friend who does not require me to pay, but if that were not the case, I would be teaching children and then go home and live in my car. I just ask that you do what's best for me and my children so I can continue to do what I love to do, which is singing and clapping and playing with my second graders each and every day and doing what I love to do and wanted to do since I was eight years old. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. You have very well-behaved children, by the way. Next is Cassandra Yenart. Ms. Yenart, I hope I pronounced your last name right.
That was pretty good. Yenart.
Thank you.
My name is Cassandra Yenart, and I live at 379 Springdale Avenue in Altamont Springs, Florida, 32714. I have been teaching 20 years. This is my 13th year at Fern Creek Elementary. I love my school. I love my students. I won't say it's easy, but I will say I love my job. I'm here today because we have struggled the last 12 years as a family financially. We have gone through many layoffs with my husband, so we rely on my income. My income is not enough to support a family of five. This summer, for example, we have turned to charities for food. We have turned to charity for clothing. My children did not get new clothes for school. My children do not beg for things. They do not ask for things. They don't. But we just don't have the things to give them. We don't go out and buy expensive cars or expensive things for the home. We live in a very small 1,100-square-foot home. We chose a small home because we could afford the payment. Glad we did. Because we're not making enough to do anything better. As a teacher, I spend an enormous amount of hours working late. In fact, tomorrow night, I'll be working till 7:30 or 8:00 doing lesson plans with my team. I team plan. I'm mentoring two teachers. My children stay with me. The first week of pre-planning, 70 hours I worked. 60 hours the first week of school. It's been 50-plus ever since because to do the rigor that is demanded for our curriculum and our Common Core, you have to think through it carefully. And I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just saying it makes our job time-consuming and rigorous and takes away from our families. I just would like to see us compensated for the extra time that we're spending, the $2,500 that was offered by Governor Scott, the raise that we would like to see consistent to meet economic demands. Because it hasn't. It hasn't. Inflation rises, but our salaries don't, and my family has suffered. So thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Yenart. Our next speaker is Ms. Denise Diaz. Ms. Diaz, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Denise Diaz, and I live at 1215 Virginia Drive, Orlando, 32803. I come to you as a parent. Both of my children go to school at Fern Creek Elementary where she teaches. My daughter, she's excelling in reading because of her teacher. I have support staff that are working with me tirelessly to make sure that my son gets the speech services that he needs. I've seen the changing expectations that are put on teachers now with Common Core. This is truly a partnership as a parent with these individuals and these staff. And I will say, I'm just completely upset to know that there are teachers at our school while we have homeless children in our school who are receiving charity services and teachers that are qualifying for the same. That is unacceptable. As a parent, I am disappointed in this School Board. I understand that you are not here to compromise your budget, but you need to show the leadership that it takes. The leadership that it takes to make sure that teachers are not just appreciated, but are respected and valued. I am urging this Board to make investment in my child's future and education. You need to put these teachers as a priority. To do anything less shows the lack of commitment to my children's education. Teachers have families too and should be able to provide for them, just like I do. That means teachers and support staff need to be compensated. We can take a week to show appreciation to teachers, but it's up to you and much more to show that they are valued and respected. So I urge this Board not to make it about some collective bargaining fight or whatever, but make it about our children, which these teachers and these staff are committed to. And so I am here to say that while, thank you for giving us that break. I think it was more about the fact that you all got to say your piece and then just walked away while we were all here, ready to say our piece. So as a parent, I come to you, we'll do whatever it takes to work and support our teachers in our schools and make sure that my child's education is not compromised over balanced budgets, but truly a priority for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Our next speaker is Ms. Lisa Marie Lewis. Ms. Lewis, welcome.
My name is Lisa Marie Lewis. I live at 2008 Mosher Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32810. I am a teacher at Cypress Creek High School, and I have been a teacher in the state of Florida for 16 years, and I have been with Cypress Creek High School for 12 years. I am blessed every moment to have touched the thousands of lives that I have touched. I am friends with many of the students that have graduated from my class, and they have become more like family to me. I am blessed to have one child, but I am also blessed to have thousands of children that have passed through the system. I didn't want to become a teacher. I wanted to be an artist, and I wanted to create things on Broadway, but instead, my mother said, you know what? Be a teacher. There's something noble in it. And so every morning, I get up at 5:45, and I drive my daughter, because I'm a single parent, to Longwood, and then I drive all the way out to Lake, I drive all the way out past Cypress Creek High School, past the airport. Being a teacher makes my parents proud of me. I am very proud of myself, and I know that my students are very proud of me. I'm sorry that I'm very emotional about this, but I really love my job, and I don't think being an artist and designing Broadway sets would make me cry the way it does. I love my students. I will go anywhere to help my students. I stay long hours, and I learn things like CBC boards and PARCCs and CCSSs and all the other acronyms that you make me learn from Tallahassee, even though I think that these people in Tallahassee don't know what they mean themselves. I think that honestly, that politicians just make us jump through hoops. They don't understand that children come to school hungry, and that I tell my children that are on free and reduced lunches to bring in all their food. If they don't eat it, to bring it to me, and I put it in my refrigerator so there's an apple for somebody in fourth period. But now, it comes to my pay. I love the fact that you paid me during the summer because that's how I paid my mortgage. I love the fact that I go to work and the students love me, and if I don't show up for work, they call me or they text me, and they're worried about me. But I need to pay my bills because the power company doesn't understand that it's collective bargaining or it is some sort of other bargaining. Because when I call the power company and I tell them that I can't pay them this month, I'll sit in the darkness. I don't want to sit in the darkness because I don't make my students sit in the darkness. I want to be the light for my students in the way that they are the light for me. Because of this, I need to pay for my child. I need to pay for my child to live in a home that I love, and it is small, but it's my home. It's our home. And I need to pay the bills, and I need to pay my car to get, that gets me across town at the all-wee hours of the night. And I thank you very much because if you give my principals a 6% raise, and if you give my custodian who works hard for me a 6% raise, you must give me a 6% raise.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next, we're going to hear from Leona Rockman, and after Ms. Rockman will be Judy Bastos, Sandra Maldonado-Ross, Cassandra Howell, and Wendy Doramal. Wendy Doramal. Ms. Rockman, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Leona Rockman, and I live at 2650 Daniel Drive, Avito, Florida, 32765. I have a letter from a teacher. May I read that as well? Okay. This is from a teacher at Sand Lake Elementary School. "I'm a third-grade teacher at Sand Lake Elementary. I love teaching children. I average 80 hours of planning and teaching each time, each week. I spend much of my salary on supplies to enhance my lessons and foster growth in my students' learning. I arrive each morning at 7:00 a.m. and stay until 5:00 each evening. I go home and continue working. Please support the teachers of Orange County. We need a raise. We are on the front lines of our country's future. Please help us feed our own families. There are many evenings I'm reaching into my own pantry to help my students." I wanted to say, I wanted to, members of the Board, Mr. Siblatt and members of the Board, you are correct in that we have no control over Common Core or merit pay. But according to our legislators, we do have, they say they have the flexibility that they give to the counties to work with the Unions to negotiate what they think is best. My question to the Board is, prior to the Governor's proposal, what did the Board allocate for teachers' salaries in the budget? It's just a question. And I know you're not going to answer it, but just wanted, it's a question just to think about. This is an opportunity for Orange County Public Schools School Board to show teachers you care about them. The comments that you made about appreciating us, we appreciate that, but let's put our words into actions by taking action and making it where teachers don't have to have two jobs in order to support their families. They're not asking for a lot. They're asking to support their families. So with the additional 3% increase and the Governor's proposal, I'd like for you to consider putting that into the budget where we, where teachers are able to support their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rockman. Our next speaker is Ms. Judy Bastos. Ms. Bastos? Did I say it correctly?
No.
Oh, she did. Okay. Then we have Ms. Sandra Maldonado-Ross.
Sandra Maldonado-Ross, 6919 Compass Court, Orlando, 32810. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, first of all, and to say a few words in reference to priorities of our budget. I realize you're doing what you feel is the best you can at this point, but keep in mind there are things that we can always try and find later on and look through it again and prioritize as needed. So that in mind. I know one of the big priorities the legislature has at this point in time is technology, and we've even heard it said tonight that they want to get to 75% here, even though I believe the mandate is only 50% by that deadline. I'm all for technology. Don't get me wrong. I'm a teacher myself in Seminole County, was formerly teaching in Orange County for over five years and overall for 17 years. But at the heart of education is not your technology. It's the teacher. Not, one teacher that I know of, including myself, has ever gotten an email, a phone call, a letter, or anything thanking them for the technology that they were able to use in their classroom that helped make a difference in their life. It was for the teachers that were a part of their lives, the individuals that made that contact, the trust, and helped inspire them to go on to whatever it is that they do in life. So again, while I am all for prioritizing technology and use of technology within the classroom, please continue to make the teachers the priority and focus of our funding and not just the technology. The mandates say 50%, while I say, great, if we have it, go above that. If not, let's make the priority the teachers before the technology. That's the important part, and we all know that. And I'm sure as individuals yourself, you're not going to think back on some book that you read as the best thing from your education. It's going to be a teacher, a person within your life that helped get you to that point, not that particular thing. And while, like I said, we didn't have that technology, again, it's still the same type of thing. We're not going to think back on a book or anything like that. Remember, the people, those are the priority, not just the technology. And the technology is great, and the teachers appreciate it and would love to have as much as they can, but again, remember, it's the people in their lives that make the big difference. So thank you, and keep that as a priority for your budgeting.
Thank you, Ms. Maldonado-Ross. Next, we have Cassandra Howell. Ms. Howell, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I would like to read a letter from one of my CTA members who could not be here tonight because their son had a doctor's appointment.
Can I have you start with your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. 2423 South Conway Road, Apartment 2305, Orlando, Florida, 32812. Thank you. Dear School Board Members, Today, we are hoping as a body of teachers that you grant us a 3% raise in our salaries in addition to what Governor Scott has already promised. Teachers understand that there are many things that are required of us that are done outside the boundaries of the school day. These are things that we do not expect to get paid for. Unfortunately, this is normal for a teacher. However, within the past year, it is obvious that our already full plates have quadrupled in size. There seems to be more to do before and after school than during school. We are tired, pressured, and stressed out, and it is only the fourth week of school. Here are some specific examples of how my plate is overflowing. Over the past several weekends, I have done nothing but lesson planning, grading papers, and Marzano strategies all day long. Over the past several weeks, it seems like our planning time has been eaten up by meeting after meeting. We are still trying to figure out all of the technology that has been thrown at us, and we have not had the time or the true training that we need in order to use this technology properly. It's very complicated. It's very complicated. On Friday afternoon, I worked from 2:45 until 5:00 p.m. in the afternoon on lesson plans for just this week. That is 2 hours and 15 minutes. And the 2:45 PLC meetings, 2:45-minute PLC meetings, we had discussing lesson plans, and the 30 minutes that it took to write out the scale, learning goal, and essential question on the Common Board, and you get a grand total of 4 hours and 15 minutes to have what is required of me for lesson plans. On Sunday, I missed church because I was grading seven sets of papers, 19 kids in my class, thinking about Marzano graphs, scales, strategies, reflections, and studying my brand-new reading and math. I find that it is a very hard thing for us as teachers to not be able to afford to pay our bills. I am a single parent, I have a daughter in college, and I have one in fourth grade. I have been employed with OCPS for over nine years, and in that time, my salary has only increased $4,000. It is hard for us. I spend more money out of my pocket than I bring in. We are only asking that you fund what you value. If you truly value teachers, there is money there in the budget, then you need to show us that you value us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. All right, we next have Ms. Wendy Doramal, and then after her will be Clinton Anderson, Philip Roman, Steve Cleland, and Doug Head. Ms. Doramal, welcome.
Okay. Wendy Doramal, 2914 Goldenview Lane, Orlando, Florida, 32812. Okay, I'm a teacher at Timber Creek High School. Tonight, I want to address the ever-growing problem of wage theft of teachers. Over the years, the state, the district, and school leaders have heaped more mandated work on teachers. At the same time, schools have stolen teachers' paid planning time for mandated meetings or professional development. While teachers' workloads have increased significantly and unpaid working hours have been added to our plates, no additional pay is offered for the hours that we work beyond the school day. OCPS teachers' salaries remain among the lowest in the nation. OCPS teachers have a contract that recognizes a 37.5-hour work week. The reality is that to effectively fulfill all of the mandated responsibilities of our jobs, teachers must work 10, 20, 30, or more unpaid hours a week, every week, all school year. In fact, many teachers would love to get a part-time job to supplement their terrible pay, but we cannot, because the part-time job is our teaching job. Every time teachers have to attend professional development trainings, PLCs or other meetings during their planning periods, or during the school day, we have to work without pay to make up what we should have been doing. Filling out IEPs, meeting Marzano requirements, contacting parents, answering an email, conducting research, preparing handouts, and fulfilling numerous other mandated duties. Stealing planning time from teachers is wage theft. Administrators have piled on off-the-clock work with defensive statements like, "Teaching is a calling," and we know as teachers you want what is best for our students. Of course, teachers want what is best for our students. We love our students, but that does not mean we want to work for free. I love teaching. Teaching is my passion. However, teaching is not my calling. Teaching is my profession. I am a professional. I did not take a vow of poverty. Every teacher deserves professional treatment and respect. Every teacher deserves to be paid for every hour that they work, as long as that work is mandated by their employer and required for their job. This year, the district recommended a new lesson plan template, and some schools, including my own, are mandating that teachers use this plan. It takes many unpaid hours to complete any five-day lesson plan, and many more to complete the other added one. I know my time's running out, so I'm just going to say, this pile represents the work of 14 teachers and 18.6 unpaid hours for them.
Do you need 15 seconds to wrap up?
16 seconds. Wage theft not only steals money from teachers, it steals time. Time with our families, time with our friends, leisure time that we will never, ever get back.
Thank you, Ms. Doramal. All right. Next, Mr. Clinton Anderson.
Thank you so much for having me up here tonight. A dollar and 17 cents, that's how much we budget for science education in Orange County public schools. I'm sorry. My name is Clinton Anderson. I live at 6005 Windhoover Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32819, and I work with wonderful administrators at Chain of Lakes Middle School. I couldn't ask for better administrators. They support me, they support my staff. I would like for this board to be very bold in supporting science education, because when students have their hands and minds on opportunities, that's when they're learning. When I allow my students to create memories in my classroom, that's when they're learning. This iPad is a great thing, and I use it in my classroom daily, but let's be smart about it. Instead of having me spend $200 on a cover, let's be penny wise. Let's really do what's best for teachers. With my students, last year, 90% scored a Level III or higher on Science FCAT. Granted, I do have some great students, but I'm only effective, because my pay is based on 6th through 7th and 8th grade reading and/or math scores. You may not be able to do anything with that, but know that. I go to work every day proud, because that's my livelihood. That's what I love to do. Please fund science education, because a dollar 17 means that I'm paying, on average, $800 a year for my students to have hands-on opportunities. In the United States of America, we have a lot to hold up to. We really need to fund science education. We should fund teachers. It's demoralizing whenever administrators, they do a great job, they get a 4%, 3% or 4% increase, I'm not worth it. I work hard. It took me, putting, I'm the only person in my whole family that's ever went to school. I put myself through college, and then to give myself a raise, I put myself to get a Master's of Science Education, so I could better teach my students. What I'm being told here in Orange County, the way that I'm feeling, and thank goodness, you know, most of my grants will be paid off because of different things that pay off our grants, so I'm not sure if I'm going to stay in the state of Florida. I love the Sunshine State. I love the people that I work with. But it's demoralizing whenever we're almost being pitted against each other, and I do see that's going to happen. If we're paying a beginning teacher $38,000 a year, I've got some experience. Be bold and think about individual schools. What Dr. Jenkins is doing in the county is a wonderful thing, and we need her leadership. However, at our schools, we have great people who can lead each other, and it comes a lot easier coming from a peer rather than coming down from a county office. So please think about being bold and allowing teachers to work 12 months out of the year, maybe not every single teacher, but those teachers who are able, those teachers who have talent and who have the time to put into developing quality lessons. I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, we have Mr. Philip Roman. Mr. Roman?
Okay, good evening. Thank you. My name is Philip Roman. I live at 7966 Shells Drive, Apartment C, Orlando, 32817. I'm often told by other people that, since I'm about to retire, they're asking me, "Aren't you going to go into the drop program?" It'd be nice, because I'd get extra money, but I'm decided definitely not to do it. I'm worried about my health and the stress. You've heard before from everybody how everyone works hard. Three days a week, I discipline myself to be at my school to 9:30 in the evening, and I'm still behind. I'm still behind. A lot of that time is not used for creating lessons, but it's doing the paperwork, the homework, that is required. On the other side of the coin, as everyone's saying they love their job, I hear a lot of people just complaining, "I have no life." You have me here speaking, but I wish you could have the teachers that I've known just this past year who have quit their job. They're not here. They gave up. They overworked, overpaid, not overpaid, I wish, underpaid. And I cannot even think of, you know, a part-time job. Like the others, I'm working constantly, and many of us are under medication because of the stress and the extra hours. I will take that cut in my pension, but I'm concerned about my health. I don't think I could go on teaching beyond my, you know, retirement that they want. It's just, you know, mentally and physically impossible. So I implore you, we definitely need a raise, and by the way, I've never seen any principal stay as late as I do in the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. The next speaker is Mr. Steve Cleland. Mr. Cleland? Welcome.
My name's Steve Cleland. I'm president of Orlando Professional Firefighters, 4005 North Orange Blossom Trail. I had a, had something I was going to say, and that changed a little bit, I must say. I was humbled quite a bit for the young lady that was here tonight, literally is teaching and homeless. So, 25 years of bargaining for firefighters, I've never, I've never spoken in a meeting like this and heard that, so God bless her, God bless the teachers and the work you do, and the union who's having to bargain for people who are employed and still homeless. I came here today to express our support. Also, in the 25 years of doing this, I probably didn't get to work with teachers' unions. Because of the legislature and because of what a lot of public employees have gone through in the last few years, we've learned to work together and have walked the halls in Tallahassee together, and when Diana calls me, I'm here to help and vice versa. I agree with you, what Tallahassee has done to education, well, has not been good, the majority there. I think it was unfair to take away 3% after gutting education and pay, and the money now that they're trying to put back, I think they deserve and more. Anyway, I wanted to express our support for the teachers, what we can do to help. I know a little bit about collective bargaining, to the extent that I know somewhere, you know, the middle ground is where everyone needs to get, and I hope the board will do its best to encourage its negotiators to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleland. All right, next, we've got Doug Head, and just so you can be prepared, after Mr. Head will be Jeanie, I believe, Conick, Jim Callahan, Alex Rodriguez Hoyer, Diana Moore. Mr. Head, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Doug Head. I live at 800 Mayfair Circle in Orlando. When I was a kid, when I was about 10 years old, my sisters and I desperately wanted to go to Disneyland in California, and I was in Michigan. It was a long way away, and our folks said, "Well, we need to economize. We need to save money in order to accomplish that objective." Well, in our family, we worked real hard that year, and we saved the money, and we didn't eat steaks. We ate a hamburger, and we got together the money to be able to go to Disneyland, and we got that reward. And I'm looking at what's been going on in Orange County, and I sort of feel like we've been saving money at the expense of teachers, and it's time to give them their trip to Disneyland. It's time to give them the reward for the economies that have been achieved. I've heard some numbers tossed around tonight, and I've seen memos from Richard Collins, and I'm completely unable to understand what the actual savings are, but it appears that there's like $400 million in funds that can be spent on things, that you want to keep some in reserve, you want to keep some, that somehow or other, we saved an additional 30, or an additional 60, or an additional $200 million from the budgets last year. And it seems like my family got its reward at the end of a year of saving, that it is time to give the teachers the reward. I would urge you to instruct your bargaining team to be generous at this time, and to, let's move on this and get the cash in the pockets of the teachers, who you heard tonight were working so hard for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Next, Ms. Jean or Jeanie Conick? Conick? Forgive me if I mispronounced it, Ms. Conick.
I will correct you on that.
Janay, I'm sorry. Well, Ms. Flynn just told me Janay.
Yes.
Welcome.
Janay Conick, just like it's spelled. I'm sorry, we put accents on French names. I've lived all over the world. I'm an Air Force brat. I was married to a...
Ms. Conick, can I have you give us your address first?
Oh, 2485 Flowering Dogwood Drive, 32828. My children are out of school now. I used to be a substitute teacher for Timber Creek High School. Love the school. Teaching as a profession, I'm here to support them. It broke my heart to hear some of the stories these teachers told. My children went to DOD schools. I wish we would go to DOD schools. It would cost a lot less for books, et cetera, and you could pay teachers. Our teachers are not only responsible for teaching our children, they're also, they're our children's mentors. They spend more time with our children than we do. I have never worked since my children were born. They were born overseas, I was also. I have been afforded a life many people would like, and so have my children. I try to give as much as I can. I volunteer quite a bit, and to me, that's my reward. As a substitute teacher, I loved it until that two-Friday rule came into play with Kelly. I'm going back to help with school, because I'm bored. My kids are fixing to graduate. I know in other countries, teachers make a lot of money. Children go to school many more hours. I went to Canadian school, went for 12 hours. You take religion, art, everything. I feel the money can be found. The health insurance you provide for teachers, the company my husband works with, we went to, they went to an insurance company, they are self-insured. I feel the board could probably, or the union, could get an insurance company to write a policy that they could afford. Being homeless for a teacher is wrong, so wrong on any scale for anyone. As far as the budget process that was put up on there, Ms. Gordon, on March, April, and May, from what I understand, that is time for finals, graduation. There's too much pressure, not only on the teacher, but on the student, to further go I'm disappointed in the way my, well, my children were educated well, the budgets weren't so bad, but to see what I see now, the board needs to find a way. I don't know where or how, but you need to find a way to support these teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Conick.
Oh, one more, last thing.
Five seconds.
Real quick, not in five minutes. To get, you talked about getting parents involved at school to help students. That's not going to happen until they support their own child at home.
Thank you. All right, we've now got Mr. Jim Callahan. Mr. Callahan, welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Siblatt, yes, my name is Jim Callahan. I live at 204 East South Street, Orlando, Florida. Not a teacher. I have worked in budgets, including at the city of Orlando. Recently, I was involved in the property appraiser campaign, so I was familiar with the property taxes, and I've been looking over some of the budget documents. The fiscal cliff is very dramatic, but the reality of the school board budget is most of the money comes from... of the money comes from the property taxes. It's just sort of an odd paradox that, in terms of the overall budget, the federal funding's not very much, but in terms of the individual programs, if they wipe out the school lunch program, we're going to have a lot of hungry kids. And with the way they've been behaving in Washington about the agriculture bill, where they used to pair the agriculture bill with the food stamps and the school lunches, it's a bit disturbing. But even so, and I appreciate Member Flynn who brought up that if federal funds are cut, other things might be pushed into the budget. The amounts there, again, we're only talking a few million dollars out of a billion, $1.2 billion budget. Again, it impacts those programs severely, but in terms of the overall budget picture, in terms of what we're worried about for these raises, it's not that much. While some costs are going up, with all the new schools you've been building, I can't imagine that the new schools are less energy efficient than the old schools they replaced. I mean, I assume your Committee on Value Engineering did their job and made sure the schools were energy efficient. So there should be some savings there. I understand there's been some savings in terms of the energy efficiency of the school And looking at this fund balance issue, I understand that, from the email correspondence, that there should be two months' worth of revenue there, but with $1.2 billion or $1,200 million, I mean, it's easy to divide by 12. That's 100 million, so two months should be 200 million. But your fund balance allocation is 400 million, twice that. So it looks like there should be some money available. Yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Next, I had Mr. Rodriguez Hoyer. Okay, I didn't understand his card, Ms. Moore, but...
No.
Okay, well, he doesn't need to yield because you have a card in right after him. But let me tell the lineup as you come up here. After Ms. Moore will be Clinton Salter, Fred Short, Etta Pierre Joseph, and Lisa Mawelson. Ms. Moore, welcome.
Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue, representing the class from Teachers Association and all 12,750 teachers. We speak about collaboration. I've been emailing, asking questions about the budget. The first night we did this budget hearing, there were three people in the room. I asked some questions and I was told I would receive an email. Mr. Head was here as a taxpayer and said, what about everybody else? And so yesterday, I received an email, which is what I passed out in the audience, from Mr. Collins with the numbers that I was asking for. It's very difficult to go into negotiating when there isn't true disclosure, full disclosure, to be collaborative. So what I will read is what I received in terms of the budget. I'll save most of the numbers, but the number that I was looking at was what was budgeted for instruction, and it was a billion dollars. But the actual number that was spent was $820 million. So if we budgeted a billion dollars and spent $820 million, the question that we have every time we come to the table is where does that money go? So I go on your website, and your CAFR for 2012 is there, and it says that you had $273 million left after you received your income and paid your bills. And the email I got today saying this year, there was 27 million in excess of actual expenditures. So it's a game that I can't seem to follow. So I go to the DOE website and I follow the fund balance. In 2009, the general fund balance was $221 million. 2010, $249 million. There's a pattern here. 2011, $337 million. In 2012, $380 million. And the number I received today for the total fund balance is $413 million. So my question is, is it a pattern if you continue to have extra money left over that you slide into a savings account to use for reoccurring expenditures? It shouldn't be a shell game. So in terms of collaboration, I would like full disclosure when we ask questions about the budget. So I brought a few people tonight who are also interested in these numbers because they have waited a long time and they do appreciate that there is an offer on the table. But we're trying to look at how we calculated those percentages in comparison to how we calculated those percentages. So maybe we need to talk about that. So I have heard about health issues increasing. The morale is the lowest I have seen in a very long time. In fact, it's difficult because teachers start at $37,000 and they've been there for five years as starting teachers. It takes them 10 years to get to $40,000. The way the salary schedule is set up now is a first-year teacher gets a $250 raise to get to the second year. And we wonder why teachers in their first five years leave the profession. It used to be those of us who were experienced teachers would assist them. We don't have time to help them anymore because we have so much on our plate. And it might even increase. So I will also say that there are a lot of teachers that are paid out of federal grant money. You should look at that, too. These numbers are all on your website and sometimes you get them in an email the day before you come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, Mr. Clinton Salter. Mr. Salter, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Soblet. My name is Clinton Salter. My address is 2410 Monte Carlo Trail, Orlando, Florida, 32805. I want to say that, welcome to this school year, Board, Mr. Soblet. I wish that it was a more positive welcome in light of what our employees are saying about your leadership with regard to their substantial differentials and disparities between their salaries, their needs, and the needs of our children that are Orange County Public Schools students. I myself have put three, four students through Orange County Public School system. I have been aware of the rampant, this, you know, I guess, displeasure between what teachers deserve and what we're affording them in this county. I think we shouldn't be driven by what we consider capital improvement needs of facilities because everybody knows that education is what happens inside of a facility and not what happens to a facility. We have to make sure, through you, and all of you, and I know many times you've mistaken some of my statements as picking on any one of you. I haven't. I've actually been picking on all of you collectively. It's called collective bargaining association of blame. I blame you for some of the things that's happening in our community schools, closures that don't have to happen. But when we drive our education by a capital improvement budget on new building construction as opposed to the capital, the improvement of the quality of instruction, I think we missed the mark. I think what we have to begin to do, and I think, I would like to, I would hate to be in your positions, especially as an elected official in central Florida at this point in time. But I do admire the fact that you do pour thousands upon thousands of man-hours into making sure that you represent these voters. I know you do. I know each of you care to put out something that you want to put out and say with pride that you accomplished the best that you could. But my son was an excellent student in Orange County Public Schools, valedictorian of his class. He came back educating in Orange County Public Schools and now is in Leon County Schools. The disparity between his pay and what he was able to do was too vast for him to ignore. I have to tell you that I think that there has to be some balancing of how we approach this whole matrix of what we're going to build over the next 10 years and what we're putting out every year in the students, the 100-plus thousand students that come through. You know, Bill Gates said that we're ruining millions of students in public education, and I hate to say that that's true. I don't even want to admit that. What I want to say is that we give a good effort. We give the college a try, but the proof is in the pudding. We measure success by the outputs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Next, we have Mr. Fred Short. Mr. Short, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and a thank you to the board for giving us this chance to speak. I don't, oh, Fred Short, 1412 West Brookshire Court, Winter Park, Florida. Happy to say that I've taught in Orange County my whole career, 20-something years, I've lost count, because I hit the top of the pay scale, so there's no place else to go. I don't envy the position you're in, but, and I'd like to let you off the hook, but that's not why I'm here today. I heard talk about wage theft. I started tallying the number of hours that I give uncompensated, and last year's number was 342 uncompensated hours. That's the equivalent of 10 weeks. And when I think about the lost time that I've had with my 10-year-old daughter and my 15-year-old son, it's heartbreaking when I think about lost time that I can never get back again. I've heard it said many times in bargaining that we're salaried employees and we can't make any overtime. We can't make anything more than, well, normally it's a 40-hour week, we don't even get that. But that's not true. Martin Marietta, or now, I guess, McDonnell Douglas, anyway, they have a policy that once an employee works more than five hours in a week, they get overtime and they are salaried employees. So I really don't want to hear, I'm sorry, you guys haven't told me this, but other people that represent you have. And I really don't want to hear that there's a wall that keeps us from getting paid for extra time. I also heard talk about Financial Cliff earlier and this massive fund that we have for Financial Cliff. Well, I did not hear any more compelling Financial Cliff than what some of these earlier teachers had conveyed and shared with us. That, to me, that's a real Financial Cliff. That is actual living daily and nightly with that. We have not only a financial, I would wish that the special project for this fund would be to give us the raises that we truly deserve in addition to what the governor's initiative had brought to us. I think it's time for you to be bold and assertive and step out there like you've never done before. And I really hope that you will consider that. We not only have a Financial Cliff, we have a morale cliff, and our teachers are being pushed off of both, off the Financial Cliff and off the morale cliff as well. I heard talk about CPI and how the effective spending power of dollars for the county has really slagged. But let's remind everyone that all the teachers are dealing with the same Consumer Price Index and raising the prices, too. So we can't just talk about one person's perspective on the Consumer Price Index. Of the 30-something million every year rolled in, every year is the definition of recurring. I mean, this is, that's what it means. So maybe you can't spend the 30 million this year on teacher salaries, but what about the past $30 million? Working conditions, I hope you will maybe consider. You do have power with working conditions. Maybe you could do something with that for us, too, at a separate meeting. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Short. All right, I've got Etta Pierre Joseph, and then after that, Lisa Mawelson, Deanna Wolford, and Anthony Sims. Ms. Pierre Joseph, welcome.
Good evening. Etta Pierre Joseph, 6372 Raleigh Street, Orlando, Florida, 32835. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just came here as an observer. I'm a parent. My daughter attends Dr. Phillips High School. She's a sophomore. I'm kind of neutral because I don't really know much about, to make an informed decision on what's going on with the budget. It's my first time here. And I was not going to speak, however, I am very appalled that, on one action, that stirred me and stirred my daughter in a negative way. It kind of stirred us both to action. The meeting started 30 minutes, approximately 30 minutes late, when Chairman Soblet mentioned about taking the break. People were taking breaks, walking in and out, but the gesture of hitting the gavel and pushing weight was very offensive. My daughter, my 10th grader, who attends Dr. Phillips, said, Mom, I felt offended and it was demeaning. I don't know much or anything about what's going on, but it's kind of piqued my curiosity. And I told my daughter, it's time for action because this is not the floor of the Florida Legislature. There is a, some sort of camaraderie or date that you deal with. And you normally see that on the floor of legislature when you deal with that with your peers. But I think there are not only teachers in this room, but there are also parents and their students. And I am very, very appalled at that behavior. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pierre Joseph. Ms. Pierre Joseph, I'm sorry if you're appalled at that behavior, but I can tell you from eight years in the Legislature, the level of decorum that we require in here is far less than what is demanded in the Florida Legislature. So if that appalls you, I apologize, but we do abide by parliamentary procedure and the rules of decorum, and those are our rules. All right, we've now got Lisa Mawelson, Ms. Mawelson, and forgive me if I mispronounced your name, and then Deanna Wolford, and then Anthony Sims, welcome.
It's Lisa Mick Wilson, 9078 St. Andrews Way, Mount Dora, Florida, 32757. Thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak. I, like the parent, I am a teacher, though, but I am kind of new and I've been trying to get more involved and understand the process. And so hearing all of what's going on with the budget and being a teacher, going into my eighth year now, I'm kind of confused and don't quite understand why there never is any money. I never really understand why is it that our salary has to be bargained for. When I started with the district in 2006, I understood that there's a salary schedule, there are steps, and you get a step increase every year. Okay, fine, no problem. So my first year working, next year, got a step increase, then all of a sudden it came to a dead halt. Another dear friend of mine, coworker, was in the same boat where a lot of people always looked forward to that big step from like, I think, year 15 to 16, where it was like a several-thousand-dollar increase, that she missed out on and still has yet to recover the pay on. I'm not sure what information the board has about where we've gotten raises because I don't know where they are. We received like several years with no raise. Then one year, we came out and we received like a $500 bonus. And then just two years ago was when they redid the salary schedule and you got your new letter assignment for what you were. And I don't know what other raises that I've gotten. And like one of the science teachers said, I also paid myself by going to get a master so that I could get an increase in pay, but with no help from the board because like you all don't even really fund your teachers for education, but you want us to provide education to students and instruction that's rigorous and all of this, but like you don't do anything to support your teachers education-wise. One of my other concerns that I'm not quite sure about is, I know that, well, all the teachers know, of course, we don't get paid in the summer. And so what we do is, along with all of the things that are already taken out of our salary, like the 3% for retirement, we set aside deferred pay, if you pay insurance premiums, if you try and contribute so that you have some retirement, all those things are deducted out of your paycheck. But does that money, which I know you can't answer, but I would just be curious to know if that money goes into an account that earns interest? Because I don't understand why we don't have some interest sitting around, because there's a lot of teachers that I know that do deferred pay. And so we don't get any interest back on our money. It's our money, it's less of our salary that we earn in a year, and then have to make it through the summer with that money or find a job to offset those expenses. So I would just hope that the board would consider giving us raises because we work very hard, we work countless hours, we work with few breaks, we work. A lot of people say, one of my little jokes that I always tell is that, you know, I don't think I want to stay in the teaching profession because it is, it's very stressful, it's demanding, we get no appreciation, we get no additional pay, and it would be nice just to work a job where you could go to the bathroom when you wanted to. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Ms. Deanna Wolford, and then our final speaker, I believe, is Mr. Anthony Sims. Ms. Wolford, welcome.
Thank you. Deanna Wolford, 900 South Chickasaw Trail, 32825. I've been an Orange County student and employee for 25 years. You know, not all at the same time. You know, not all at the same time. But this county means a lot to me, my school means a lot to me, and my students mean a lot to me. I think all of us—or most of us—are in this profession because we care deeply about our students, and this is a public forum, and we not only have a right to be here, but an obligation to be here—to let you all know how important this is to us and to our families, and also to our students, because anyone who is a parent of a child—which I am not—but anyone who is a parent of a child knows that when you are stressed out, that communicates to your child, no matter how much you try to hide it, and it communicates to our students as well. And we care about them, and we do everything that we can for them, and we want to make sure that we do our best for them, and we need your help to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Mr. Anthony Sims. Mr. Sims, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Anthony Sims, 1936 Waterford Circle, Claremont, Florida. I can't afford to live in Orange County. The first thing is that I just wanted to say that, you know, I understand the budget. However, you know, you guys can do a little bit more to meet us halfway. And also—I also wanted to bring the attention of, you know, the working conditions, because people have been harassed, and this has nothing to do with following directions or the new Marzone or anything like that. The people here have been harassed by principals, and so have I, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's part of the working condition, so please try to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. I think we have one more speaker. I'm not sure it's on this agenda item, because it's not indicated. Mr. Michael Holt—Mr. Holt, is that on this issue, sir? Okay. No, that's fine, sir. Come on up. Welcome.
My name is Michael Holt. My address is 2221 Stanley Street, Orlando, Florida, 32803, and I'm going to be very brief, speak more to a macro issue. I was a lobbyist and worked with the Clearinghouse and Human Services. I don't know if anybody knew Bud Bell. Bud Bell was a pretty fierce force, and I've watched appropriations and process. And I'm just going to say in short that we have a big problem in Florida, and that we just have a low teacher base salary. And if we want—I really think, regardless of what Governor Scott's agenda might have been, I think he had it right, that if we don't have a higher salary base, we're not going to compete for the best and the brightest. I've seen my principals struggle and struggle to get a qualified teacher into a position with a substitute an entire year while we look for somebody who could teach 5th grade, and I really think it's because of our budget problem. The reason I brought up the appropriations that I've watched in action is because if a group wants the money that's working with the budget, if they want it, they can find it, and I've watched it happen. So I encourage you to think about the big picture, think about Florida being able to recruit the best and the brightest, get your head around it, and find the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. All right. I don't have any other speakers. Before we go to the votes on—we're on item 3.01 still, but I've got a number of board members who want to speak. Mrs. Gordon. Okay. Mr. Roach.
Well, I think that the information that the board has heard tonight, I think, is really key for us to be able to go continue the bargaining process. I believe it continues the 12th, and hopefully, that ends it, but if not, we'll continue. But I think it's important. I want to—I don't think there's anything I could possibly say that would make the room happy right now, but I do want to tell you where I stand on a lot of the things that were said tonight. I—we—this is my third superintendent, and I think this particular round of hiring superintendents—I don't—I don't recall the other two where teacher morale was so high on the list. We wanted teacher—so the board, I think, was pretty much in agreement that there was already a morale problem a couple of years ago. It was beginning to hit. And so I thought it was interesting that that was such—so high on the list, and I give Superintendent Jenkins a lot of credit for the things that she's done. But I want to tell you that, as a board member in my district, my school visits have always been, over the years—you go in, you go into a few classrooms, you say hi to the principal, you maybe look at a few programs, and you come back out. But last year was different for me. I wanted to go, and I wanted to spend quality time with teachers, so I asked the 33 principals at my schools for 45 minutes to an hour with each one of them. And I discovered that if I took the first 15 minutes and told them what was on my heart, which, you know, if you read the paper and you check out the things that I'm doing, you probably know pretty much what's on my heart. And I got a lot of information from teachers, and I wanted to make sure that I wasn't just getting information from a few teachers here and there. It's across the board. The total was 1,500 teachers talked to me, and I—the ones that didn't talk, I had index cards at my home. I've got them stacked this high. And I accumulated them, calculated them, tried to figure out where the—where's the sticking points, the sensitivity points, and you've really voiced those tonight. So those of you that were not in my schools here, you're speaking like your brothers and sisters in other schools, and I think that—I believe you tonight. I believe you. I believe the stress is getting out of hand. And there's a—there's a formula for stress that I really believe in, and stress comes when the—the work requirement is more than the time required—time allowed. Work required is more than the time allowed, and if that becomes pervasive over time, teachers either quit mentally or physically. They either walk out, or they give up, and—or other things happen that are not—not good. But here's what's interesting about you, is you're professionals, and you don't quit. You keep hanging in anyway, and that's why many of you come tonight tired. It's real. It's very real what you're going through. I don't think anybody in America with our work ethic—I don't think people generally feel sorry for people that work overtime or work more hours. We're kind of a culture, I think, that values people that work hard, but I think this is fair to say, and that is, those of you that are working three and four hours every day over the seven-and-a-half hours that are required, probably—the difference to me is—I know other professionals that do that, too, in other jobs, but I think the difference is, I look back at them, they get paid for doing that. They get paid big bucks. I—I don't think it's—I don't think it's inaccurate at all to say the teaching profession is a very low-paying profession, period. So I—I want you to know that, that I—I do feel your pain, and I wanted to feel your pain last year. I didn't want to be speculative. Now, my—my wife says, "Don't mention me in your meetings." She's a teacher wife, but I can't help it, because—see, that's how I double no. I—I will guarantee you, my wife probably hasn't been home more than an hour or an hour and a half tonight, because she—she craves my late board meetings, and I hope it's because she's working at school. But she—when she knows that, she says, "Oh, good, I'll stay and get my stuff done." And that just keeps her here. I don't know about you all, maybe you work faster than my wife, but—so—I wanted you to know that, first of all, before I go on anymore. I do understand it, I believe it. Now, what do we do about that? I work with seven school board members and a superintendent and a bargaining chief back here, and a chief financial officer, and I've worked with many of these people for years, and some, two or three years, and I will tell you the truth, just like I said about you. I don't believe any of these people up here don't want you to have any money. I don't think any of them think there's a big wad of money somewhere that we could tap into and give it to you, because I think if they did know that—and if they didn't, I'm getting so old, I don't care what I say anymore. I'd tell on them. I'd tell you they're squirreling it away. But they are not doing that. We are—we're—we're desperately trying to find the money we can to give to you. Now, it could be that there's—the man who says "in the middle" is where—the action is, and so I don't know. We'll continue to look for that, because we're—we are continuing to bargain. But I just wanted you to know that, that I represent you on this school board with the board that I believe is genuinely interested in your salaries. I do. And I believe, as a teacher—and this is my 40th year as a teacher—I just teach big people now, I teach teachers—but I believe you. I know full well what you do, and I was lucky. When I was a teacher in 1972 at Walker Junior High School, I didn't work this hard. I actually had fun teaching. It was a blast. And at 3:30 or 4 o'clock, I might have stayed around a half hour or so, and then I went home. And I jumped in the pool, and I played with my kids, and I had teachers over for dinner and barbecues. That's what we did. We—we—and we were pretty good. I think we produced pretty good kids. So I want you to know that I'm not trying to tell you that, and I—but I'm not trying to make it look like it's my thing, but that's—the—that's where I sit. I play two roles, and I'm genuinely a believer in these people, and I'm genuinely a believer in you, and I strive to, and I will promise you that I will do everything I can to see if—we can do more, if we can. I think all of us have heard the message loud and clear from you. So that's all I have to say. Chairman Siblet.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Well, let me follow that by saying I agree completely with what Mr. Roach just said. I mean, I think we've heard you all out and clear. You know, I regret—and I truly mean this, y'all are professionals. I regret that, you know, some of you have had a problem with how we run the meeting and the decorum of the meeting. That's my job as a chair, and I hope you understand that. And one thing that's always mystified me, after years in government, about school boards is why some folks—and it's not true of the entire audience—think somehow that these meetings are different than the county commissioner, city council, the legislature, they're not. So I hope you understand it's our job to maintain decorum at the meeting, or my job to do that. I do regret we got off on the wrong foot with the break. You know, frankly, I think you're going to be back here. I have a feeling in a month or two, and when we do that, I'll make sure we go right into speakers. You know, I saw Chucking jokingly or laughed with one of your members and said, you know, "I've never had a crowd in my life get upset about taking a break after two hours in the seat to go to the bathroom and get a drink." But next time, I can understand how that upsets some of you all, we'll—we'll go right into the speaking. We really do care about this issue. I'll recount a conversation I had with my sister, who's a teacher in Chicago Public Schools recently. We had a—we had a—we had a family reunion, and she's about a 15-year teacher up there. And I said to her—because she misses Florida—I said, "You should come back to Florida." You know, "And if you did, you know, I know some folks in different school systems—not ours, but in other counties, I can go to bat for you and try to get a job for you." She scoffed. She said, "Bill, do you know how much I make in Chicago Public Schools?" I said, "No, how much?" $78,000 a year after 15 years. I wish we could pay you that kind of money. I think the frustration for those of us sitting up here is truly—and I think there are a number of you who are very sophisticated at this and know of what I speak—we don't have control, again, over our revenue. We don't have control over how much income we take in, and we do have some statutory requirements about the reserves that we maintain. Couple points I want to clarify, and I know this doesn't need to be clarified for many of you, but for some of you, it does, based upon your comments. Money that we spend on the technology initiative is purely non-recurring funds. We do not spend on teacher salaries non-recurring funds, because otherwise, we'd have to claw that money back the next year, because non-recurring means it's one-time money, for whatever reason, that's not an annual stream of revenue. So we can't allocate it out. And by the way, there was a school district in South Florida that spent a substantial amount of its non-recurring funds, about seven, eight years ago, on its teacher salaries, and they had a complete revolt by their teachers two years later, when they had to cut literally thousands of teachers, because they had dipped into their non-recurring funds. The sales tax money, the half-cent money, and the one-and-a-half mil for capital construction, by constitutional mandate and by state law, that money cannot be spent on operating, cannot be spent on teacher salaries, it can only be spent on construction. So there was one speaker, and in fairness to all, it wasn't one of the teacher speakers, it was one of the community supporters, who wondered why we were investing in new facilities, in new classrooms, in new buildings. Well, even if we wanted to spend that money on teacher salaries, we are prohibited by state law from spending that money on teacher salaries. That—that is a mandate. The fund balance—I'm going to ask Mr. Collins to step up to the lectern, because one thing that we've tried to do—and we really have tried to extend every courtesy tonight—to—the speakers and—to answering the questions, so I want to continue that. Mr. Collins, where is he at? Can you step up? Let—let me point out one thing about the fund balance, and I'd like Mr. Collins to elaborate upon it. The fund balance is a snapshot in time, okay? Our money comes in different segments of money during the budgetary year. We receive the money from the state at different times. So what the fund balance shows is not a reserve, it's not a silo of money, or a set aside, or a separate account. It shows how much we have in our fund at any given time. It'd be like in your household checking account, if you get automatic pay deposit. If you looked at your checking account on January 10th, you're probably going to have a lot more money in there than you have on January 30th, after you've paid your bills at the end of the month. It's just a snapshot in time. So, Mr. Collins, do you have this document that—the CTA has handed out?
I have seen it, yes.
Okay. Can you clarify why, at that time, when you gave them these answers, the instruction budget was $1,520,000, and the actual was $820,000,000? Do you have that?
Yes.
Do you remember? Can you explain that off the top of your head?
Yeah, the—the difference there is because of the budgeting process that we use, where we—we actually appropriate the non-recurring funds each year. If you—if you look at—when I said that—that—the non-recurring dollars end up in your fund balance, we actually appropriate those the following year. If we don't spend them for non-recurring, then they end up in your ending fund balance the next year. So that's why your budget numbers look higher, is because we've included those non-recurring funds in appropriations, and we don't always spend them. Dr. Jenkins addressed that earlier.
Okay. And question six that they asked, when they asked about the total unassigned fund balance as of June 30th, 2013, I believe your answer was $61,799,000. Can you explain the purposes of that money, and why was it $61,000,000 at the time of—as of that date?
Right. Let me—let me just start with a very brief discussion of the total fund balance and what it all means. Fund balance in total is just the results of operations for the year, what—is left over after the operations of the year. Some of those dollars that are in your ending fund balance are obligated for various reasons. There may be categorical funds that have not been spent, they're required by law to be spent for those purposes the next year. Your school budgets—as an example, your school budgets represented about $76 million in roll board funds. We do not take those dollars back. Once we allocate those dollars out to the schools, they're—they're entitled to keep those and use them to buy supplies and things for the next year, so that's part of your ending fund balance. So you have a lot of obligated portions of your fund balance. Once you subtract all those things out, you end up with two major categories. The two major categories is your—you're—you're 3% contingency that the board asked us to set aside, and that happens to be $41 million for this year. I went back and double-checked on that. The rest of it that we're talking about, we call it non-recurring dollars. Those are non-recurring dollars that we set aside to be used for one-time purposes that we address during the year. Dr. Jenkins mentioned a few of those. The—the teacher training program that we used this past summer, we set aside about $13.8 million, I believe, for that, out of non-recurring dollars, one-time use. Digital curriculum program, $10.8 million out of your operating budget. So those dollars are already being spent for those purposes, increasing in the security and safety area. We set aside about $6 million in non-recurring dollars for those purposes. So we are now starting to utilize some of those non-recurring dollars for those non-recurring purposes. However, if you took those non-recurring dollars and started using those for recurring costs—I think an example that was given earlier is that, you know, changes were made to—to—in order to go to Disney World, okay? If you want to go to Disney World one time, that's great. You save the dollars, and you spend the dollars on the one-time Disney trip. Now, if you're going to go to Disney every year, that's a recurring event, so you have—that's your—that's your new baseline. So if you want to go to Disney World and SeaWorld, you're going to have to—to have recurring—a recurring source of funds to pay for your Disney World trip and for your SeaWorld trip. So that's the way we budget. We budget recurring funds for those types of events that are going to be recurring. Otherwise, you would get your—you'd, like you said earlier, you would give a pay raise one year and take the pay raise back the next year, and we do not want to do that.
And the last question that was asked by speaker, can you briefly just explain what happens to any interest that we may accrue or earn on any money sitting in our accounts during the year?
Yeah, she—I think the—the speaker was referring to the—the deferred payment program where we—where we basically pay people several paychecks in June, which allows them to use that money over the summer break. That's their choice. Otherwise, we would just pay them over their 10-month working year. If they don't want us to do that, and we do not pay interest on that, the CFE Credit Union, which is the credit union that we—most of us utilize, they have a summer pay plan, where they actually do pay an interest rate on that summer pay money. So the money actually goes into a—a savings account, essentially. So, the money actually goes into a savings account, essentially, for the teacher, and then they can draw it out during the summer with the interest that was earned on it. So, that's one of the options. But that's solely the choice of the teacher. If most teachers get paid over the 10-month period that they work, if they choose to get paid several paychecks in June and defer that pay until June, we accommodate that through our payroll process, but we do not pay them additional interest on that money.
Okay. And I may have misunderstood the question, but I think that the question, excuse me one second, I think the question was based upon a belief that we are earning, who knows what, 10 millions or 10s of millions on hundreds of millions sitting in bank accounts. So, I guess my question is, one, is that true? And, two, any interest that we do earn on any fund balances before they're expended, is that money budgeted for and accounted for?
Right. Any money that is earned by the district is included in the revenues of the district and is used for to balance the budget.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right. Mr. Rodriguez, I think Ms. Cadel couldn't be here tonight, wanted to read a statement into the record.
Board members, members of the public, Ms. Joy Cadel could not be here this evening as she has an obligation with FSBA, but she wanted me to read the following statement into the record. As chairman of the Budget Committee that is required by contract, I feel that the record needs to reflect the work of this committee. The purpose of this committee is to create an overall awareness of the district's budgetary needs by identifying and sharing priorities from the parties on the committee, which includes a representative from the OCPS Board, CTA, OESPA, and the superintendent. Since late last year, the committee met several times. The following priorities were shared from OESPA and CTA. OESPA, declare a certain percentage increase plus a monetary amount to level the pay schedule. Second item under OESPA, avoid any increase on health insurance premiums for employees. Under CTA, item one, provide a much-deserved teacher pay raise for our teachers. Item two, provide free health insurance for our employees. And item three, provide paid for professional development. I believe that the requests of the units have been met, except for the free health insurance. The school board has covered an additional $647 per employee to cover the 9.5% increase in premiums. As I have shared with you and the public, my duties as past president of FSBA require me to be in Pensacola for meetings. I do support the approval of the budget as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, on Ms. Cadel's statement. Ms. Moore.
I found this conversation really successful. I have a sister who is a teacher, unfortunately, she's out with back surgery right now, and my best friend's an elementary teacher as well. But I think it was really helpful and useful to hear the individual pain and suffering. I think it made it more real for us. One thing that hasn't been mentioned, and I know you all, the only thing you can do is come down, pretty much, and talk to this board, and we're kind of caught between you and Tallahassee. The one thing that we haven't talked about, that you don't always hear, is how much time we spend lobbying legislators, going to Tallahassee and impacting legislation. And I know Dr. Jenkins has worked diligently to cultivate relationships with statewide leaders to advocate on your behalf. So, you don't often get to hear about that, and I don't want you to walk away thinking that there is no hope. There probably is little hope with us, because we don't control how much we set the mileage rate, we don't control a lot of these things from Tallahassee. The things that we can control, we certainly want to work with you on. What I recommend is we have to get more involved in the process that elects the leaders that do make these decisions, the ones who do put into place the funding and the performance pay and everything else, and that's the legislature. And so, I really encourage you, that's what we're doing. Ms. Flynn can tell you that the Legislative Committee has spent extra time every year cultivating relationships with our legislators. Several of these board members went out on a limb to make endorsements last legislative cycle. Several of us went and did debate prep with candidates who were, would be incredibly great advocates for you, and we took extra time to do that. We consider that part of our job. So, Mr. Roach, how many trips have you made to Tallahassee trying to advocate on behalf of teachers? I mean, you probably don't have enough fingers. I know you've worked very, very hard this year. Mrs. Flynn and I did, what was it, about an 18-hour day? We got up at 5:00 in the morning, we went up and testified and bailed, and got home at midnight. The two of us were very brave and had a very, very stern conversation with the state senator that did prove out to be very fruitful, but that was risky on our part to talk to him that way. We do that for you. It's helpful to hear this, because I think it'll change me a little bit even next session to be stronger and think about the teachers more. So, again, please encourage your fellow teachers and staff members to be registered to vote, be educated voters, and vote in elections. And remember, we're your friends. I know we can't always, Gray, we can't always do what you want, but we're here for you. We want to be here for you. And I wish, this is one of my favorite lines, I wish I could wave down from heaven a couple hundred million dollars and give you all the 30% raise, but we can't. We can't do that. I wish we could. So, work with us where it matters, and we'll partner with you to try to continue to make things better. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I, too, want to thank everybody for coming here. I always get a little disappointed, and, you know, when it gets heated between us and them, you know, it just sort of knots my stomach. So, I hope that we can take a deep breath, and, you know, as Mr. Roach said, you know, continue to look into ways that we can help the teachers. I wanted to explain the reason why the meeting was late, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. We have a pre-agenda meeting that starts at 4:30, and we allow special-order speakers to come and talk about things that aren't on the budget, or budget, on the agenda. And so, we had seven, you know, at five minutes, because if you want to speak to us longer, you can do that, the pre-agenda. And so, that ran longer. So, I just wanted to say, the meeting was late, because we were involved with parents and community members wanting to talk about another issue, and so, we always try to get on time. One of the things I heard, I took notes for every single person who spoke, but there seemed to be a little confusion about what the requirement was for the collaborative bargaining. And so, I was hoping that maybe the superintendent could explain, you know, what the law is on that. And then also, is Mr. Short still in the room? Mr. Fred Short? Mr. Short, you don't remember me, but you had my son in math, Jimmy Flynn. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you sent him out of the room, and so... But he was wrong. He was wrong, and so, we called Mr. Short and had a meeting with him, and he goes, "Oh, we've already made up." And I'm like, "No, we've got to talk about this." So, see? I was trying to get your attention up here. So, it's good to see you again. And he's made it, he did well, college graduate. Thank you very much. So, anyway, I was going to ask about that, if we could get the baseline on where we are, because even if we decided here, it still has to go back right by our process, there has to be that bargaining process.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. You are correct, the collaborative bargaining process happens in a separate venue than school board meetings. There is no actual bargaining to take place at the school board table. The next meeting is actually scheduled for this Thursday, for them to further that process. But it is by design and by intention bargained between the two units and not directly with the school board. Mr. Rodriguez, you might want to add to that.
Mr. Pomerini's over there, is our labor and employment specialist. Something specific questions about the process that you want him to answer, or us to answer? Ms. Flynn?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what the requirement was on that process. There is some legality around, that surrounds it, so we can't just go around it. We can't avoid it.
Yeah. Members of the board, in your collective bargaining agreement, it has explicitly stated that you will engage in a collaborative process. That means you have a team split equally of district negotiators and CTA negotiators, and they get together, and they negotiate these things collaboratively. It's supposed to be a problem-solving exercise, where the district brings information and resources into negotiations, and the parties think about how best to solve problems with the information that's provided by the district. It is actually improper for you all to directly deal with employees, and it is improper for the CTA to come directly to you all and bypass the district's bargaining unit. That would be an unfair labor practice both ways. So, that's why these things aren't negotiated with you all here at the table, is through the collaborative bargaining leadership team, which has been designated by both parties to go ahead and negotiate these contracts.
Thank you. I just wanted that to be clear. Mrs. Gordon had given a lot of the background on it, but I just didn't want people to think, "Oh, you left there, and we didn't do anything." Because then we'll, we can go into executive sessions, we can talk then more about any outcomes that we feel might occur from this meeting, but I didn't want the teachers out there to think, "Well, they didn't hear us." Does that make sense, everybody at the table? So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you. I'm glad Mrs. Flynn asked that question, and I'm glad that Mr. Pomerini, Attorney Pomerini, answered it, and answered it well. After hearing everyone tonight, and not because I am a teacher, and I'm going through exactly what you're going through, I'm either effective or developing or highly effective, I'm common core, I'm everything that you are. I open my door at 6:30 in the morning, I get the kids that you can't handle, and they come to me, if you were in that district or whatever. I heard a teacher say tonight that she didn't understand collaborative or collective, or it's not about that. It is about that. You wouldn't have had a union. This is a right-to-work state, and I ask you to go home tonight and go to askask.com and look up a right-to-work state. You have the right to work, and you don't even, you don't even have to join the union. If you go to other states, you are demanded to join. And that's why, that's one reason why they, some of them pays a high. We go to the conventions with them. We're all delegates. I've been delegate to all of the nationals and state and local convention. And from what I'm hearing tonight, Dr. Jenkins said it well, I just didn't agree with one part, that it's nothing we could do. There is something we could do. And I'm asking the board to go back and do what you're supposed to do. There's only one way that we could do it now, and that is through collective collaborative bargaining. But it's not supposed to be collective. It's supposed to be harmony. It may be friction, but it's supposed to be harmony, as Dr. Jenkins said, when you come before the board. If you do not know the difference in it, I ask that you go to Ask, or Google, or Hot Boat, or all of those little search engines that we use, and look up the difference. Similar, compare and contrast, similarities and differences. You have one voice, and that's your union voice. We have one voice, and it's our chief negotiator in the team. I'm not going to, I'm in favor of the budget, but I'm asking that this team, both of the team go, that they go back, Mr. Chairman, that they go back and do what we ask you to do. One thing that bothered me, when President Moore got out, and when I met her one day, I think she was coming out, and she wasn't talking to me, but she was just saying, "Full disclosure, full disclosure." I would never want to leave this table tonight. If you are sitting here and thinking that we are not giving full disclosure, that would be so unfair and dishonest. Because let me tell you, when you hold on to a little bit of money, you're all great teachers, and I got to tell you, you're great. And the reason why you're great, because you've kept this county on top in the worst time of our lives. I don't know how you did it. Year after year, you went higher and higher and higher, until the DOE changed the goal goal. And it amazed me, we just kept throwing things at you, the DOE kept throwing things at you, but you kept going. You have got to go back, Mr. Chairman. There should be no secrets. You cannot have secrets, because they will be revealed. I could never go out here tonight. That bothered me when I heard President Moore said, "Full disclosure." If we are hiding something, let it go. Let it go. These teachers are important to us. They're more important than non-recurring funds, than reoccurring funds, than the contingency funds. I remember working in this county, and this board gave me, and all of us, $300 across the board, and told us to go home and keep our mouths shut. And that's when we went and got a union. And that's why they were raising and praising Ulysses Floyd tonight, because we said, "We're not going to take it, we're going to get a union." And that's how we got a union, because they gave us $300 across the board and told us to shut up. We don't want to be that kind of board. I think that the office that's on the table, it's not CTA's offer, it's not the board's offer, it's our offer for the teachers that's teaching. And I still have a problem, I don't care how you can open up anything, and when we haven't even settled everything, that bothers me. And one of the ladies, when I went out in the audience, talked about that tonight, and that touched my heart. We shouldn't be opening up nothing for anybody when it's settled, until we have settled with everybody. That's what we have done in the past, and that's what we need to continue in this board to do in the future. I am asking that we, as a board, if they think, and we, if we are hiding, I would think that all the meetings that we've had, that we are not hiding, that it is full disclosure. And I'm going to say, "Let it go. It's not worth it. We're going to lose everybody, including me." And that's not good, because everybody is in this because they want to be in it. So, I'm going to ask that both of the team, it's not over, and I'm not going to tell you, "I'm sorry, guys, we can't do anything." I've been on bargaining. I've been on bargaining with Collins for many years in Osceola County. I don't think he wanted me on the team, but we did full disclosure, and we received our money over there. And as I stated, I've been on bargaining here in Orange County, as a member of the union, and a retired teacher in Orange County. We do full disclosure. Guys, let's not hide it. If our teachers can't trust us, how could we trust them with our children? We need to really give them the best this year that we can, and love them for being there for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Gold.
I want to circle back to the legislative opportunities. I do think that, you know, following Mrs. Gordon is always tough, but it is, it's a fact up here. We all, I think you all heard that we want to do more, but we need help with that. And with that in mind, the Orange County delegation is having its open hearing at the county chambers, and I was looking for that date, but I can't find it. So, if somebody could find that date, so that we could let them know, but they need to see your faces. Because by the time you go up, when they're into budget appropriations, in the final throes, in the March-April, you know, February-March-April time, they're so busy doing what they got to do, they're not listening. So, they need to hear us at home, and they need to hear all of us together, speaking the same words, that we want more for our teachers in education, and that you all need to provide that. Because you heard earlier, the governor had this idea, but the legislature did not follow through with it, and that's a fact. So, we just need to keep on that same path together and work together in that effort to drive that message home. And we have passionate parents about it, and the parents need to stand up, not just as PTA collective, but as individuals who have kids in schools, and it has to happen with knocking on those doors locally. with knocking on those doors locally. Going up to Tallahassee, too, at the right time is good, but locally, we need to be strong voices. So that is one of the things that I would ask everyone here, and for you to pass on to those who have left, to be part of that same message as we go. So it's consistent, consistent, consistent.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. All right, board members, I don't have any other speakers queued up, so at this time, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 3.01, which is adoption of mileage to support the 2013-2014 final budget. Mr. Collins, do we need anything more than that as far as a recitation of the resolution?
No, sir. I think that the recommended resolution is included in your packet, so I think that addresses it fine.
All right. Can I have a motion to do so?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt the top mileage of 8.362 to support the 2013-14 final budget.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Ms. Flynn. All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Ms. Flynn, that we adopt the proposed mileage schedule set out in Agenda Item 3.01. Is there any debate on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. All right, board members, we are now on Item 3.02, which is adoption of the 2013-14 final budget. Can I have a motion to approve that agenda item? It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Flynn. All right, it's been moved that we adopt the 2013-14 final budget as set forth in Agenda Item 3.02. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. All right, we're now on Agenda Item 3.03. I think I need to ask, is there anybody tonight who has come to speak on Agenda Item 3.03, which is, well, you know what, I need to slow down. We need to have an explanation of this, don't we, Mr. Rodriguez, to be in the right setting? All right, Dr. Jenkins, will Mr. Rodriguez be explaining 3.03?
Board members, Item 3.03 is changes to our travel reimbursement policy. It's one that has been presented previously in a work session. It incorporates some changes that were made at the behest of the Finance Department, in large part to avoid duplication and increase efficiencies, so that when you reported your time, you could calculate your mileage from your first destination as opposed to from your home location. That calculation is included, as well as some changes to how the board's reimbursement shall be calculated, to be consistent with Florida statutes. And those were identified in a previous work session pursuant to Florida law. All policies must be held in a work session before they're adopted by board approval. That board session was held with not, I believe on this one, there was no comment whatsoever. So.
All right, board members, as stated by Mr. Rodriguez, for anybody in the audience who are watching at home, we've already heard this proposed policy change in a publicly noticed work session, which members of the public could testify. I don't believe we have anybody else who has signed up to speak on this issue, have me, Ms. McGill?
No.
No. Okay. At this time, can I entertain a motion to approve the modifications to board policy DKC as reflected in Agenda Item 3.03? It's been moved by Mr. Roach. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gould. Any debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of Agenda Item 3.03, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that adopted unanimously. All right, 3.04, Mr. Rodriguez.
For this, I will turn it over to Ms. Sarah Corin. This is a policy regarding service animals.
Board members, this is policy file IMG, and it is a new policy. This has been reviewed in the work session, and there was no public comment at that time. This is a new policy that will provide for us to have service animals on campus. It requires that all animals on our campuses are service animals, and they are not therapy animals. This policy is in line with the Americans with Disabilities Act and puts us in line with all other current government policy and procedure. It outlines the requirements for training and providing for the service animal safely on campus and for making sure that our students are safe as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Corin. Has any member of the public come to testify before us tonight on Agenda Item 3.04? I don't have any speaker cards. Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to adopt the proposed changes to board policy IMG? It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore. Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Flynn. Is there any debate or discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the proposed changes to board policy IMG as reflected in Agenda Item 3.04, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. All right, we are now on Agenda Item 3.05, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Chairman, both of these next policies are going to be addressed by Mr. Palmarene as they are both related to labor issues.
Good evening, members of the board. This policy is suspension and dismissal of professional staff. There's various changes that were made in this policy. As you are aware, we had a work session on this. There was some public comment regarding the period with respect to how long employees have to clear up arrests before they can be relieved of duty without pay. But I'm going to go over very briefly what's in there. The policy has been amended to reflect the current status of state law with respect to what is just cause to terminate teachers on continuing professional service and annual contracts. The policy has been amended to reflect the practice that this district has long employed with respect to employees who are arrested. They have 90 days to resolve misdemeanor charges involving moral turpitude, or 180 days to resolve felony charges. If they don't resolve them in the allotted time, we then give the superintendent the right to relieve those employees without pay pending the adjudication of their charge. And after the adjudication of the charge, the superintendent reviews the matter and then goes ahead and gives a recommendation to the board about the ultimate action to be taken with respect to the employee. With respect to the provision dealing with non-renewal professional service contracts when you terminate teachers for incompetence and failure to correct performance deficiencies under 1012.34, we have changed the policy to delete some outdated practices that are no longer employed and to state that we are going to follow the procedures enunciated in the collective bargaining agreement between the parties. Also, we have clarified that if an employee does not request a hearing within 15 days after this board has moved to terminate them, that the termination will be then deemed final, and then it will be brought back to the board at the next available meeting for entry of a final order. This is consistent with our collective bargaining agreement. And it also reflects the hearing procedures to be employed for teachers who were hired after July 1, 2011. Remember, that's the part of Senate Bill 736, which requires that teachers hired after July 1 have different hearing procedures and a lack of availability for DOA, that these hearings have to come to the school board. And then finally, under the student supervision portion of this policy, it informs the teaching staff that the responsibility for supervision of students, and they fail to properly supervise those students and allow the students to leave the classroom in the school campus without authorization, may be charged with willful neglect of duty under the policy, which could lead to any number of steps, including up to intermination. Those are the changes in the policy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Palmarene. I do have two speakers on this. Before I go to them, do I have any questions from the board on these proposed changes? And again, these have already been heard in a work session and an advertised work session. Ms. Moore, welcome. And then after Ms. Moore, I have Ms. Catherine Hedinger, I believe.
Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue. Good evening again. I did come to the work session. Thank you for inviting me. And I asked several questions about the process of putting people out of work without pay until an investigation was done. And since that time, we really haven't gotten answers, and it seems like it's before the board to be approved tonight. So I guess I'm asking, process. If we have an open hearing where we can ask questions, where do we try and work out those questions and concerns on a policy about firing professional staff? As the labor union president, I come to every school board meeting. I have now coming to those rule development hearings. It seems like this should be something that crosses the bargaining table. I've had to file several ULPs to make sure things cross the bargaining table, and I'm tired of the paperwork, and I'm sure several people here are also tired of the paperwork. But help me, when we have something like a policy to fire staff and take away their pay until a proper investigation is going on. I'm going to ask our attorney, who happens to be here tonight, to also speak on this matter and maybe shed some light on a process to bring a policy like this to the board before it would go to labor relations and we would have a discussion in a collaborative manner. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go to Ms. Catherine Hedding, but did you have a motion you wanted to make, Ms. Moore?
I did, thank you. I pushed my button. Mr. Chairman, because we have some comment on this issue and in the late hour, I'd like to make a motion that we move this particular public hearing to the next meeting if someone would be interested in seconding me.
Okay. It's been moved that we postpone this to a date certain in the next hearing to get answers to the union's questions. It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon. I don't want to do a disservice to the other speakers, so before we vote on that, would she like to speak? Or who is Catherine?
I'll come back and speak on them.
We're going to hold it over so we can answer Ms. Moore and the union's questions, if that's okay with you, Ms. -- and is it Ms. Hedding or Ms. Hedinger?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Rodriguez, are we going to have to re-advertise if we do that?
Yeah, this is a point of, it's not parliamentary procedure, but it's just a point of procedure as it pertains to Chapter 120. At any hearing in which you are promulgating rules, and in essence, your policies are rules, you do take public comment at your workshop, which you did, and then at your regularly scheduled meeting, you vote on it. That requires 35 days out. I'm not sure if there's any, what the pressing timeframe would be, but that would have to require this policy to come back at another workshop. And if there's no changes, quite frankly, you're really just bringing back the same policy again. But it's your prerogative.
Okay. Well, it's my inclination, I'm speaking on my own behalf now, we'll hear what the rest of the board has to say, but I understand that we'll have to re-advertise it, and we'll have to change the motion so it's not the next board meeting. But I think it's worth it, from my perspective, to get some answers to the union. Sky's not going to fall if we do this in 90 days or 60 days, so I'm disposed to be in favor of the motion myself. Mr. Roach?
And I'm fine with delay, but is it appropriate to answer her question? Did she ask this appropriately and timely, and was she not given an answer? Help me understand that.
Mr. Roach, I think the question was posed last time, and I think Mr. Palmarene answered it at the hearing. I don't know what question is pending that we failed to respond to. I think it was explained as, this is our current process, and we're just codifying it, but Mr. Palmarene can speak for himself in what he answered that night.
That night, we responded to her questions with respect to the 90- and 180-day rule. This has been our longstanding practice. As she was aware, we have arbitrated this question. The arbitrator has held we explicitly have the authority to do this. These employees are not taking out without pay within that 90- or 180-day period unless it's a disqualifying offense. If what you are charged with is a disqualifying offense, like what you will see later here tonight, then we relieve you without pay at the first opportunity. But when I say disqualifying offense, that's under 1012.315 in the Florida statutes. But if it is not a disqualifying offense, we give them 90 days with pay if it's a misdemeanor involving moral turpitude. We give them 180 days if it's a felony to resolve those charges, and they are paid that entire time. To the extent they do not solve those problems within the 90- or 180-days, then the superintendent is empowered to relieve them of duty without pay. This has been something that we have done consistently in my three years here. We did it with a case that the union took to arbitration, saying we didn't have the authority to do it, and the arbitrator said explicitly, we have the authority to do what we did. So, I mean, and with respect to terminating teachers' employment, the only thing that we are doing with our policy is changing the policy to explicitly reflect what's in Chapter 101233 and Chapter 1012.335 with what the legislature has said is just cause for termination. We're actually just copying the statute into our policy.
All right, Ms. Moore.
At this point, I was the maker of the motion. I'll be happy to amend the motion, but I'd still like to keep it on the floor. Mr. Rodriguez, help me, so my motion would just be to re-advertise it, bring it up at the next possible, as soon as possible, meeting so that then we can have the public hearing again.
That's, yeah, that's perfectly fine. Frankly, if the board decides not to vote on it tonight, then it'll just be brought back at the next opportunity, as advertised, so.
Okay, that would be my motion. Thank you.
Before I go to Mrs. Gordon, the motion's been changed or amended by the maker of the motion. Is there a second to that?
No, I was the one that seconded it, and I do not want to second it for the reason of what Attorney Rodriguez is saying. If it's not going to change, there's no need to pay for re-advertising. I'm in favor of your motion, Mrs. Moore, and the reason why I'm in favor of it, because we already know with the 90 days with pay, it was not solved. We're being kind because, as a board, we can pull an item, and I think that this is an item that can be pulled. What they did, instead of going the route of the collaborative bargaining system, they went another route, and it caused another issue. Instead of fighting with somebody else, you need to fight with the right-to-work team. And as a board member going along, I would like for you to keep your motion on the floor. I will continue to second it. Give them that opportunity to take this issue to the collaborative bargaining team.
All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Gordon. So I think Mrs. Moore's motion, and let me ask you if this is correct, Ms. Moore, is to pull the item from the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Which is, I think, what your desires are, Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, sir.
So will you second that? Because that's what she's moving to do, is to pull it.
Yes. Well, that's what I had seconded the first time.
Okay.
She was going to amend it. I asked her if she would not amend it. I didn't want anybody else to second her amendment.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
I wanted to show a way that the collaborative bargaining team could have gotten around it. We got to stop fighting. We got to stop running to the perk. We got to stop running here and there. We have a process in place. We've got to use it. This board will have to do what I've asked you over and over, go back to collective. Collective, you can raise hell all you want, but collaborative, you've got to bring your issues to the table. If the issues were not asked to be brought, we can grant them the opportunity, through Ms. Moore's motion, my second, to give them that opportunity to bring it as an issue to the team.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. All right, is there any further discussion on that, Mr. Rodriguez, before we take a vote on it?
Just as a point of clarification, if it's pulled, Mr. Chairman, can I suggest then you're going to have a work session before advertised for the workshop? And otherwise, because otherwise, I'm just bringing back the same item in 60 days' time, 45 days' time. So at the board's recommendation, if this item is removed today, that obviously sends a signal to my office that the language, no?
No, not at all. You know, I think the only reason, and board members, jump in here and correct me, the only reason we're pulling it is to give Ms. Moore an opportunity to have her questions answered. Unless there's any desire by your office to change a policy after answering those questions, then there's no need for another work session. If it remains as is after answering the questions, we've already held a work session on it. I don't know, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see why we would need to do another work session if the language doesn't change, so. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that adopted. All right. We are on 3.06. Is that a companion policy to the earlier one, Mr. Rodriguez? Okay. You want to make the same motion for 3.06, since it's a companion policy?
Okay. I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to do the same thing with 3.06, to move that we temporarily pull this from tonight's agenda and deal with it in a subsequent meeting as soon as possible we get together with the union.
Okay. Can I have a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Are there any, oh gosh, let me check real quick here. Just on the two personnel issue. Okay. I don't have any speakers on the consent agenda that I see, other than the two employee matters we're going to go to next. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Been moved by Ms. Flynn. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right, board members, we are now on, any report, Mr. Superintendent? We're now on Item 17. Any information items? I don't see any on there.
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer till next board meeting. We did want to give a report on expectation graduation. I will tell you, the numbers are very encouraging, impressive for our students. We were able to get re-enrolled. We'll bring that next time with a very short video clip.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
Board members, if you'll bear with me, but I do have to make an announcement of an executive session that had to be rescheduled. It was scheduled for this Thursday. It's being rescheduled to September 24. The School Board of Orange County, Florida, will meet in an executive session on September 24, 2013, immediately following a scheduled 5:30 PM school board meeting on the ninth floor Superintendent's Conference Room at the Ronald Blocker Education Leadership Center at this address to discuss settlement proposals in the matter of appeal to the city of Wintergarden regarding approval of preliminary plat for Crooked Lake Preserve UVPUD subdivision. This meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be available for public review at the conclusion of the litigation. The following persons may be in attendance: all board members, Superintendent Barbara Jenkins, myself as general counsel, Eileen Fernandez, associate general counsel, Julie James, and Scott Glass as outside counsel and a court reporter. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Communications Committee, Ms. Moore.
We were just joking, when I had my first and probably last opportunity to chair a meeting, we were done at 7:00. It's good we didn't get so blessed tonight. We had a communications meeting yesterday, and it was really a discuss. There were some points that are going to be referred to a work session date in October to continue the discussion. So I just wanted to announce that we are going to continue the discussion, and I think it's on the schedule that the chair is saying, you know, is it October?
15.
October 15. Thank you.
Okay. You know, and let me add to that, board members, many of you were at that meeting yesterday. We're going to take up the Sells Tax Extension on October 15, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bachelor to come address the board at that work session. And one of the things I'm going to suggest to him is that we form some sort of working group to work with him as we go forward on the business community's efforts, okay? And then you can ask him any questions you may have that came up yesterday in the meeting. Next, I've just handed out the, I'm sorry, Ms. Flynn? I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I attended the Exceptional Students Act Information Seminar last Friday. It was given by the Disability Chamber of Commerce, the Down Syndrome Foundation of Florida, and the Foundation for Florida's Future. Dr. Vicki Cartwright was there, along with our parent liaison, Sarah Sequencia. It was very, very informative to me, and our two representatives really did a very good job of answering questions about what, you know, what the rules and regulations are from the OCPS. But I brought back some magazines, and they had a very, very good article about the new legislation that was passed and outlines it, so I think you guys will have to copy it. And that's it.
Okay. Any other committee reports before I move on, Mrs. Gordon? Did you have a community action report or anything?
No, I did not have a report, but I just, am I in order to highlight something?
Of course. Now's the time.
Well, I wanted to highlight Ricky Horton. I wanted to highlight him. He's in here somewhere. I wrote it down. Hold on. Where did I put it? Give me one second. Okay. I wanted to highlight Ricky Horton. Some of you may not know him because he probably doesn't have your area, but Dr. Jenkins might want to say something, and she knows him well, and I know him very well. He has worked in School Board District 5 and many other districts with Ry Maryam. He is our senior administrator for transportation services and operation. He will be retiring in November. So Dr. Jenkins put it on the agenda today, but we want him to know. You've seen him at some of the hottest transportation meetings. I think he does work with a couple of the other areas' superintendents. I know he's worked well with Dr. Lawson in the back there, and I think all the main area superintendents are gone that he really worked with, but you couldn't find a better person to get, when those parents come to those meetings, they are angry about the buses on their roads and the sidewalks and the traffic, but he takes them, you should just come and, I love the building process thing. It is wonderful. Yes, they come and hollering and yelling at us, but when we leave, we're all in a big group hug. And Ricky Horton does an extremely excellent job as a senior administrator of getting things done between the municipalities and the county to make sure that the transportation of our students and certain things that need to be done is done well. So Dr. Jenkins, I don't know, you put him on here, so we won't get another chance. And I would find it robbery if I did not salute him tonight as a very dear friend and a great employee for Orange County Public Schools and Transportation.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Any questions on the work session schedule announcements? One quick announcement, the foundation does so much for Orange County Public Schools, and their golf tournament is this Friday. If there's any way that any of you all can make it out there between 7:00 and 8:30 a.m., their shotgun start, I think, is around 8:00 o'clock. You don't have to stay the whole time, but if you can make it out there just to greet the golfers, what they do is they all line up, and you'll have a chance to say a few words to them. You can be out of there by 8:30 and be back at your offices by 9:00, if you can make it out there. So I know we all have busy schedules. Also, let me just make a personal plea. We have the dreaded charter school application work sessions coming up next two weeks. I'm down to only four board members on the one on September 26, so if we can get as many board members there as possible, I know it's not possible to get eight there because of schedules, but, you know, I just hate to go forward with that meeting with only four board members. And we have to go forward with it because of the deadline that Dr. Bernier has to deal with. So we're down to 12 applications, I believe, and we may get down below that before the time comes. All right, anything else for the good of the order?
Yes.
Dr. Jenkins, Mr. Roach.
Yes, I'll be joining you at the foundation golf tournament, Mr. Siblet. You've got one course, I've got the other, I think, so. I'm running around greeting everybody, thanking them for their support. Just an FYI, and I'm so sorry to bring this up late, I don't even want to do it, but I need to do it. I just want to just focus this on Attorney Rodriguez, and ask for some help here, but I just want to know and clarify, maybe for a next board meeting, what is the board's role, responsibility, duty with regards to the revenue from high school vending machines? If you could help me with that, Mr. Rodriguez, so I know.
Mr. Roach has brought to our attention that apparently at the schools, we have vending machines in the schools, and obviously they have to comply with our policies that deal with the healthy initiative, making sure the food in there is healthy as well. There is some discrepancy as to where the funds need to go. That discrepancy really lies in a federal policy and a state policy, and in the absence of direction from the board, really, staff has to take some direction with where those funds get to go. Over time, I think some of the dollars have remained with the school. Mr. Eugene and I have worked together since the issue was brought to my attention. We plan to meet with Mr. Roach to kind of go through the options, but ultimately, if no direction is given by the board, then, quite frankly, the superintendent and Mr. Eugene have an obligation to disperse those funds accordingly. If it goes back to the district, and that's the role that we undertake, then that's appropriate, but if not, then we need to hear some feedback from the board as to where those funds should be. There is a lot of information on this that's out there, including some federal legislation that's, not legislation, rulemaking that's out there that's proposed, which actually will truncate some of those vending machine dollars and so forth. But for now, it appears there's an absence of direction from the board, so Mr. Eugene had recommended that those dollars come back to the district, and Mr. Roach has brought that to our attention for further review.
Well, Mr. Roach, I'll look to you for direction on how you want to proceed on that. Obviously, if you want to bring it back to the board through a work session, let me know. That's your call, sir.
I'll go with the attorney's advice, and that is to meet initially with him and Mr. Eugene and whoever you want, to give us some guidance, and then we'll bring it back the best way that would be more efficient for, but it is kind of timely because the machines are full of food. We've got to know where to put the money.
Okay. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I have an idea for a possible work session coming up. The first week is goal, being very involved with staff at a new school, dealing with the traffic and carpooling issues and what have you. I was very pleased with the staff. Where it came to be a problem was having a proper roadmap with the municipalities. What responsibility is theirs? What responsibility is ours? I've got a school coming up at Popka Elementary, when as soon as we reorient the building to a different street, the road is completely inadequate. And the school board, we're in the business of dealing with the parents and carpooling and safe ways to school, but it's the municipality's responsibility to work with us for adequate crossing guards, dealing with hazardous conditions, and when a school opens, having adequate roadways, and I don't know all the terminology at midnight here. But I think it would be useful, Dr. Jenkins, to have some sort of work session in conjunction with some of these municipalities so that we think things through. Hackney Prairie, the road improvements, we were just trying to get the parents used to a new traffic flow. Dr. Gordon will know this. And a week into it, they closed the road because the improvements weren't done before the school opened. So I would just love to have a work session to figure out how we can work better with the municipalities to avoid some of these situations. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at OCPS.net or call 407-317-3200.